Welcome to the April 20th, 2021, meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you call the roll, please, Mr. Howe?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez.
Here.
Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gutierrez.
Present.
And Mayor Maria.
Here. Thanks so much, Mr. Stowe. A quick announcement about our agenda management. The youth safety item will go first on the administrative agenda right after consent calendar, and we'll be aiming to start that at 2:30. So let's move to our ceremonial items. Mr. Clerk, would you read the first one into the record, please? And folks who are here to receive the Arbor Day proclamation, you'll be able to say a few words after I read the proclamation. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item one, Arbor Day, April 30th, 2021.
Whereas Arbor Day observances are held in California and in the city of Santa Barbara throughout the months of March and April. And whereas National Arbor Day is observed the last Friday of April. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara has been designated a Tree City USA for 41 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara is proud of its more than 120 years of horticultural heritage and the health and diversity of its urban forest. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara maintains more than 60,000 open space, park and street trees, and recognizes the importance of professional tree care and annual tree planting programs to sustain a livable community. And whereas Santa Barbara Beautiful contributes to the health of the city's urban forests through support for the tree, street tree planting program. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara will feature a series of fun and educational social media posts in observance of Arbor Day and Santa Barbara's specimen park trees. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Murillo, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Santa Barbara, and recognize the value that trees provide in enhancing the quality of our lives. What a great way to start our meeting. Is there someone here to receive the proclamation? Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have David Gress. And David, I have now unmuted you.
I think he's still muted. So click on him again.
Robert, can you mute yourself, please? Mr. Gress, is someone there?
Oh, the mayor, but you can say.
Hello, Mr. Gress, it appears you are muted on your end. And I see you're connected. If you could just unmute yourself, we'll be able to, you'll be able to join us. Madam Mayor, Mr. Gress is connected to us, but it appears he's muted on his end.
Okay, well, we have time. Let's move on to the next proclamation, and maybe he'll be able to, we'll squeeze him in.
Certainly. Item two, Donate Life Month, April 2021.
And it's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are recognized worldwide as expressions of life-giving compassion to those in need. And anyone can register to be a donor regardless of age or medical conditions. And whereas more than 108,000 individuals nationwide, including more than 21,000 Californians, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list with their health in limbo, as sadly, 17 people on average die daily while waiting. And whereas broad outreach is critical, as the need for donated organs is especially urgent within the Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas last year, deceased organ donors saved more than 33,000 lives, the most ever. Which is why it is so important for people to realize that a single person's donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, and tissue donations can save and heal more than 75 others. And whereas California residents can sign up to be organ, eye, and tissue donors when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas more than 17 million Californians have registered with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be donors are honored. And all prospective donors are encouraged to register at donate life california.org. That's English and in Spanish, done vida california, or donee vida california.org. And register for living kidney donations at livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Kathy Murillo, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as DMV Donate Life Month in the city of Santa Barbara, and encourage community members to consider registering as donors when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California DMV. And we'll welcome a member of the public to receive this proclamation. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Scott Burns on the phone, and Mr. Burns, you're now unmuted.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor Murillo. Memorial Day, 2015, I was sailing with some friends at Santa Cruz Island. I was at Fry's Anchorage. The Harbor Patrol came up behind me, put their patrol boat, and over the loudspeaker they said, "Mr. Burns, we have a kidney for you." What I didn't tell you is I had kidney failure. In May 2012, I got, was on the kidney transplant list. I wasn't expecting the Harbor Patrol that afternoon. Most people wait seven or eight years for a kidney from a deceased donor, or you get it within a year from a family or a friend, and I had no such luck. Now, as the mayor mentioned earlier, about 100,000 people are on the waiting list nationwide. That's about the same population as Santa Barbara. So just imagine, those are just your friends and mine that are on a list possibly dying. About every nine minutes, another person is put it on, put on the kidney and organ transplant list. But enough numbers. I get on the Harbor Patrol boat. They speed back to Santa Barbara, and I live in Santa Barbara. And they drop me off, I drive home, and I take a really nice long shower. Because I've had enough operations before to know that you never get a nice shower at a hospital. So leave, leave home, we drive down to Cedar Sinai. The next morning, 11:30 in the morning, Sunday of Memorial Day, I'm awake with a fully functioning kidney. That's only part of the story. A nurse at NICU in Cottage Hospital, Vivian Brutel, had collapsed a couple of weeks earlier at her gym. They thought it was a stroke. It turned out to be a brain aneurysm. Once they realized it was a brain aneurysm, she, they realized she would never live again functioning normally. Only about one-half of 1%, one out of every 200 people that die annually died away that their organs can be donated. Vivian's could. Her family agreed that the organs should be donated. And they contacted my wife Lisa, who contacted the Harbor Patrol. Doesn't happen often, but sometimes family members can put friends at the top of the list. Now, I've never met Vivian, but I've gotten to know her mom, her sisters, her nieces, and nephews, friends, and also Connie Bush, who received Vivian's lungs. Well, nothing's happening this last year with the pandemic. But normally, we do a donate-run-walk event in Fullerton in April. And also, we volunteer at the Donate Life float at the Rose Bowl. And at Leadbetter Beach, every September, we have a run barbecue, or actually a walk barbecue, because if it was a run, we'd have to have more permits from the city, but that's a different story. But we have a run, a walk, a barbecue at Leadbetter Beach in honor of Vivian. Now, speaking of the pandemic, that we haven't done anything, but it was mentioned that we had more people with organ donations last year than ever before. So in spite of the pandemic, people are still donating organs. And another thing that we found out, those that have recovered from a COVID-19 are still eligible to donate. Now, we talk about the pink dot on your driver's license to let hospitals know that you'd like your organs donated. Now, 90% of the adults in America want support organ donation, but only 60% have signed up. So I appreciate the city for letting me give this presentation for the proclamation. So more people know that they really should sign up so people don't die needlessly. Thank you again for your, your, your help. Thank you.
Thanks for everything you do, Mr. Burns. Best to you and your wife. Mr. Stowe, did the Arbor Day community member come back?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have David Gress on the phone, and David, you are unmuted. And looking forward to hearing from you.
Very good. So you can hear me now, I take it?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hello, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm a past president and long-term board member of Santa Barbara Beautiful. So on behalf of its officers and Board of Directors, I'm delighted to receive this year's Arbor Day proclamation. Perhaps the most significant contribution that Arbor Day has had is in educating young people regarding the ways that trees contribute to their physical and mental well-being, as well as the health of our planet. After missing Arbor Day observations last year, for obvious reasons, we are pleased to announce the resumption of physical Arbor Day observances at some local elementary schools. This year marks the 56th year of our partnership with the city of Santa Barbara in planting trees. And this year, we are reaching a new milestone by planting over 13,000 trees along our city streets over that time period. We thank you for your participation and continued support of city tree planting and maintenance for all of our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for what you do. We'll close the ceremonial items and ask Mr. Casey if there's any changes to the agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just the one change that you've already mentioned, and that's on the administrative calendar. We'll hear item 13 first. That's the presentation on efforts to improve youth safety, because we have some outside speakers with some timing constraints. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. And if we miss public comment speakers who wanted to speak on that item, but they thought it would be later, I can reopen public comment at the end of the meeting. And I'll probably have to do that anyway, if we're going to do a 2:30 start time for that item. So thank you very much, everybody, for your patience with our agenda management. So let's go to open public comment, and I'll ask my colleagues to come onto the screen. This is the public's opportunity to talk to us on items that are not on our official agenda. So please speak your piece. We want to hear what you have to say. Mr. Stowe, are there folks raising their hand?
Yes, Madam Mayor, presently, we have two individuals with their hands raised, Anna Marie Gott and Ronald Buckley. And if anyone else would like to speak during open public comment, please raise your hand within the app, or you may email us at clerk@santabarbaraca.gov.
Thank you.
Anna Marie, you are.
Scott.
Almost have you unmuted. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, please begin, please begin.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. So the first thing I just want to make a comment again on is a public records request that I submitted 70 days ago for emails that were sent to you regarding the Bicycle Right-of-Way Project. Have you actually, you know, looked in your emails and submitted this? If you have, when did you do it, and why is it taking me 70 days to get this information when it is part of the adminis, a part of the administrative record and should have been provided to the city clerk the day of the meeting? Next, I'd like to know if all of you have read the email that I sent earlier today regarding 134 Chapala Street. I'm really quite disappointed, after having just spent a few minutes on it, to actually find out that it doesn't look like this project can actually be used for housing for people that were previously homeless. Why? Because the building is already permitted as a youth hospital and has been used as a youth hos, hostel. That is called lower-cost accommodations in the coastal zone. And we have a local coastal plan policy that prohibits the conversion or the removal of that. So did anyone at the city actually even look at this before the Board of Supervisors met behind closed doors to even discuss this? Were you involved? Was anyone in our, our planning department involved? Because that seems to be a very big oversight. That I found literally, I don't think I spent more than an hour between sending some emails and just looking at Title 28. And then I remembered this morning about the lower-cost accommodations. So I don't know the local coastal plan as good as your staff does. And I shouldn't know Title 28 better than your staff does. I don't work for you. I'm just a concerned resident. And I know that we have problems with our staff when they consistently don't follow our ordinances. And we have to, as residents, pick up the pieces later. So I'd like you to look into this and find out what's going on and make sure that your staff does the due diligence, because it isn't fair for the public to have to do their work.
So much. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the next speaker, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Ronald Buckley. And Ronald, you are now unmuted.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Ron Buckley. Last week, I spoke about how Crown Castle AT&amp;T were accessories to the murder of a tree on Anacapa Street. At the end, I said, "My next public comment will be a poem." So here it is. It's called "For the Sake of the Children, the Trees, and the Bees," by Ron Buckley. "Once upon a time in a city far away," and a faraway city, I'm sorry. "Once upon a time in a faraway city, their telecom ordinance was old. What a pity." "The attorney said, 'I'll call my friend. He knows about telecoms from end to end.'" "Now his friends smiled and saw dollar signs dancing in his head. He saw opportunity to feather his bed." "You know he works for the telecoms too. No conflict of interest. That's what lawyers do." "He delivers a draft with the teeth of a garden snake, reflecting the author. Oh, my goodness sake." "The citizens rumble and raise such a clatter, the council looks blank, wondering what's the matter." "In the meantime, Crown Castle puts up powers like mad, essential services, they say, and there's money to be had." "Now, this tale is not over, but for the sake of the children, the trees, and the bees, somebody do something soon. Oh, please, oh, please, oh, please." Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Buckley. Another speaker, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker is E. Howard Green. And if anyone, like, anyone else would like to speak during open public comment, please raise your hand in the application. And.
Did you give him a smile?
I couldn't tell.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, I, it looks like we may have lost the audio with Mr. Green. Mr. Green, your audio is currently listed as off.
Okay. Anyone else raising their hands, Mr. Stowe?
No, Madam Mayor, at present, we have no other public speakers indicated.
Okay, let's close public comment for now, and we'll consider opening it at the, at the end of the meeting. We do that sometimes. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Would anyone like to pull an item? Nobody sent me a message prior to this. Mr. Stowe, is anyone raising their hands to make a comment on a consent calendar item? That's number three through 10.
No, Madam Mayor, presently, there are no hands raised.
May I have a motion to move the consent calendar forward, please, for my colleagues?
I'll do the second, then.
A motion from Friedman, a second by Jordan. If there's no other discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Stowe?
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor, before the roll call vote, I wanted to read item three, Introduction of Ordinance for a $1 million Proposition 1 Integrated Regional Water Management Grant Agreement. Recommendation that Council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the approval and execution of the Public Works Director for a $1 million Proposition 1 Integrated Regional Water Management System Subgrant Agreement with the Santa Barbara County Water Agency.
Thank you for that.
And there is a motion for the consent calendar by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Mayor Maria.
It was, it was Friedman motion, seconded by Jordan.
My apologies. This is a motion for the consent calendar by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Jordan. And I'll read the roll call. Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gutierrez?
Aye.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on from the consent calendar. Mr. Friedman, did you have a finance committee meeting today, and do you have a report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, so today's finance, we heard this schedule for the upcoming budget hearings and received the budget, and it's being forwarded onto council for the budget hearing. We approved that. And then we also looked at the Community Choice Energy, Santa Barbara Clean Energy, and had a presentation on that plan and have forwarded that onto council as well.
Thank you so much. Mr. Jordan, do you have a report from the ordinance committee?
Madam Mayor, we reviewed the, the, listened to staff report and reviewed the staff recommendation for the draft ordinance for the sewer lateral inspection program. And unanimously referred that to council. I believe we will be seeing that next week.
All right. Thank you very much to you and your committee members. And we'll move on to item number 13. We've bumped it up on the agenda. Would you read that into the record, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Presentation on Efforts to Improve Youth Safety.
And Chief Barney Malekian is here. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Maria, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today to talk about efforts to promote youth safety and reduce the impact of violence on the young people of Santa Barbara. I am joined today by Ricardo Venegas from the City Parks Department, from Superintendent Hilda Maldonado from the School District, from Saul Serrano from the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership, and Ms. Isis Castaneda from the Santa Barbara County Teen Network. This, this year has been a tragic one in terms of the impact of violence on young people. And I want to talk today about, briefly about the incidents in question and the law enforcement response. Talk about community partnership and collaboration, and talk about the tripartite approach of prevention, intervention, and enforcement into the lives of young people to reduce incidents like this. Next slide, please. On January 3rd of this year, officers responded to a report of a shooting on Liberty Street in East Side, Santa Barbara, and discovered Angel Castillo and Omar Montiel Hernandez, both of whom were deceased. Two other young men were injured as well. Next slide. On March 29th, also in the evening, officers responded to a report of shots fired and located gunshot victim in a vehicle on fire in the 1400 block of Uclyptus Hill. In both of these cases, Santa Barbara PD detectives worked around the clock. On April 3rd, five days later, detectives were able to arrest two suspects for the Uclyptus Hill homicide. Next slide. On April 8th, culminating a several-week investigation, Santa Barbara PD detectives, accompanied by deputies from the Sheriff's Department, arrested three people for the murders of the two young men on Liberty Street. Next slide. The reality of gang violence is that the impact of these incidents reverberates far beyond the incident itself. And for those of us that have spent some time with members of the families of the victims, you recognize that the impact of what has happened is going to reverberate for a long, long time to come. This issue of gang violence is national in scope, and it destroys families and communities and faith in government and the criminal justice system. I have long marveled that in terms of death or injuries, if violence, particularly youth violence, was treated like a disease, the Center for Disease Control would have declared a public health emergency. the Center for Disease Control would have declared a public health emergency years ago. For the longest time, law enforcement saw its role solely as to solve the crime and arrest the perpetrators. But it is very clear that this is no longer enough. Next slide. The law enforcement effort has to be part of a larger solution, and I'm going to take this in kind of reverse order. There is, there are three sort of component parts that have to run together: enforcement, intervention, and prevention. The enforcement, which tends to be the part that law enforcement, uh, is best known for, really needs to focus on known violent offenders. And understand that even within, uh, the ranks of so-called admitted, self-admitted, uh, members of gangs or, or young people who are gang involved, the vast majority of them are not inclined to do violence. Uh, and all too often, they are the ones that get caught up and get victimized in what occurs. The intervention efforts, which you will hear, um, some about in just a few minutes, uh, focuses really on after-school activities and providing alternative, uh, alternative things for young people to do, uh, as opposed to, uh, simply hanging out. Uh, there are vast scope of, of programs, many of which the police department is involved in, uh, but many more of which are, are, are community-based and all of which, uh, touch young people, hopefully, uh, very early, sort of in the evolutionary process of, uh, of violence. And lastly is the prevention piece, which in some ways is the most neglected. Uh, if I might, if I might tell you a brief story, when I was, uh, working for another agency, there was a, uh, an article that appeared in a local paper about some work that a law enforcement agency was doing in terms of providing scuba training for young people. It was, it was again, part of this youth violence diversion effort. And it was a very nice description of what they did and how they, they, provided the class, took the, took the young people to, uh, Catalina to qualify, et cetera. But two, about two weeks later, a young woman wrote in and she said, you know, I'm seventeen years old. I'm the oldest of three children. Um, I, uh, I take, uh, my mom is a single mom and I, I take care of my two sisters. I have a B average, uh, in school. I have never been in trouble, uh, with the criminal justice system. And I just wonder when I get a school, uh, get a scuba program. And I was particularly struck by that, because I think all too often, in this discussion, about how to eliminate tragedies like Liberty Street and Uclyptus Hill, uh, all too often, we forget that the vast majority of young people are doing the best that they can to be what we, as a society, ask them to be. And to that end, I am joined by Ricardo Venegas from the Parks Department, uh, who will now, uh, give a brief presentation on the efforts of, uh, Parks and Recreation and an overview of the programs that they provide. Next slide.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, Mr. Venegas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, and Chief, I'm thanking you for, for your introduction and wonderful comments. Uh, there are many wonderful, uh, programs in the City of Santa Barbara that provide, uh, services to youth in the community. Uh, ma- many of them fall under the South Coast Partnership for Youth Safety, including the Java apprenticeship, uh, program and the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance Program under the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, uh, for those of you that don't know me, uh, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, by the way. My name's, again, Ricardo Venegas, and I, I live at the Franklin Neighborhood Center, the facility manager here, and I'm also the, uh, overall supervisor for the Java apprenticeship program and the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance Program. So what we, what we have here, uh, these two photos I'll quickly point out is, uh, an example of some of the work that we do for these, uh, programs for youth in the community. Uh, the first one on the left is, is a photo of, uh, youth, uh, working with some of our mentors. And one of the things that we like to do is bring, uh, partners from, from the community engagement, uh, team, uh, nonprofits, uh, as well as our law enforcement community. And this particular photo was actually taken, the first one on the left, was taken about, I want to say, four years ago. And we have our youth engaging with our law enforcement, uh, community. And, um, I recognize, uh, our probation department, uh, colleague, uh, Pita Flores, and our Santa Barbara PD Officer, uh, Gutierrez, uh, really talking about, uh, one, uh, career opportunities with the law enforcement, but also helping youth understand, uh, the process, uh, of, uh, helping, uh, youth, uh, extricate themselves from the criminal justice system. And that's a, that's a wonderful thing to, to be able to have and build those very positive, uh, relationships with all of our partners, including the law enforcement community. On the left, we have a photo of our Arts Alliance, uh, participants taking a leadership role in the, uh, establishment of our arts, uh, program, including the mural creation installation in various, uh, facility, uh, parks throughout the city. Next, uh, slide, please. Uh, the, the programs are really designed to provide youth development, including, uh, life awareness and, uh, hands-on employment skills. Uh, we emphasize a strong work, uh, ethic, uh, strong work habits, as well as, uh, the, the decision-making skills that they need to be successful, not just on the job, but also in the community, in school, uh, in their private life as well, and with their families. A lot of these workshops that we provide are actually done by our partners in the community, again, through the, uh, South Coast, uh, Safety Partnership and our Community Engagement, uh, Team, uh, partners. A lot of them are designed to provide resistance strategies, uh, and resili- resiliency, uh, for avoiding risky behaviors. Next, uh, slide, please. Next, uh, slide. There we go. So the Java apprenticeship program, uh, has been around for over thirty years, and, uh, I'm happy to report that in the last, uh, thirty years, uh, we've actually had many of these, uh, youth, uh, apprentices, uh, participants that have actually made the transition into employment with the city. Uh, we can verify that, uh, over two hundred and forty apprentices have been hired and so permanent, permanent part-time hour lease. And over twenty apprentices, at least in the last twenty years, have been hired as full-time employees. Uh, I would like to point out that, uh, many of these, uh, uh, participants and now employees with the city would not have had the opportunity for city employment had it not been for the support, uh, not just from the city, uh, but also from our community partners. Uh, up to, up to now, and, and, uh, overall, at least from the records that I have, we've served over five thousand local youth with employment skill development and job opportunities that have also helped them to transition into the private, uh, sector. Next, uh, slide. Next, uh, slide, please. Thank you. Uh, now into the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance. Uh, this is a very unique, uh, program, and, and I want to start off, uh, by, by mentioning that, um, the, the Arts Alliance Program has been around, uh, I want to say since nineteen ninety-seven, but it's, it's kind of transformed. It's had different names, uh, throughout the years. But in two thousand, two thousand and three, it actually, uh, transitioned from the Ortega Park mural restoration project. And then in two thousand and five, it actually became, uh, uh, the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance Program. And I want to send out a thank you to the former Santa Barbara County Arts Commission. They were the ones that gave us our first grant to, uh, uh, restore and repair all of the murals at Ortega Park under the leadership of, uh, Mr. Carlos Cuellar, a very well-known local muralist artist. Uh, in the last, uh, seventeen, eighteen years that I've, uh, been involved, uh, in supervising the program, we've, uh, created over thirty large-in-a-life public murals. Over eight hundred local youth have been, uh, provided with art mentoring and art skill, uh, development. Uh, the program, uh, also provides, uh, many opportunities for youth, uh, to, to serve, uh, as volunteers and receive, uh, community service hours to meet some of the graduation requirements. Uh, some of the unique, uh, things about the program is that it also provides, uh, a lot of benefits to the community in that it provides a lot of graffiti abatement, neighborhood cleanups, uh, uh, in the community. Uh, the program has received, uh, various awards through, throughout, uh, throughout the years, including the Hugh Peterson Award, uh, for Art in Public Places in, uh, twenty eleven, twenty twelve, and I believe twenty thirteen, as well as the Spirit of Service Award in the Clean Community category. Uh, uh, been three years now, in, I want to say, twenty eleven, twenty sixteen, and last year, twenty, twenty twenty. And a lot of this work, uh, is, uh, done, again, thanks to the many partnerships that we have, uh, both in the nonprofit community and also the, the support from our Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, uh, City Council, in, in that, uh, they provided many of the funding, uh, for these opportunities. I also want to thank, uh, the, uh, Health and Human Services Committee for their ongoing and past support to, uh, CDBG grants. It's, it's, it's just been wonderful. I, I, I think, you know, when you guys are out in the community, you'll see many of the murals that have been done by this particular group. And I want to highlight that, uh, the Santa Barbara Arts Alliance, along with their mentors, have been the, the group responsible for the ongoing, uh, preservation and maintenance of all of the Ortega Park murals, as well as, uh, many murals throughout the, uh, community. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. Thank you. I believe that's the end of my portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Venegas. Our next presenter is Superintendent Hilda Maldonado from Santa Barbara Unified School District. And just a point of order, she has a bit of a time constraint, so if, uh, there are any questions for her, she will be available for those right after her presentation. Superintendent?
Thank you very much, Chief. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Mayor Murillo. I'm not sure if... One second.
There. Good to see you.
Here I am. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Murillo, members of the City Council, Administrator Casey. I'm muted, too? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. There's a little bit of a, um, an echo. If you could turn off, if you, if you have the meeting playing somewhere in the room, maybe?
No, I don't think so.
Well, that sounds good.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Please try one more. I'll try again. Good afternoon, Mayor Murillo, members of the City Council, Administrator Casey. Thank you so much to Chief Malekian for inviting me to contribute here today to this most important community conversation about the safety and well-being of our youth. Since joining Santa Barbara Unified on July first, I've been in the mode of listening, learning, and leading through this pandemic with the number-one goal of safely reopening our campuses to full in-person learning, which obviously has huge ramifications on our young people's sense of mental, physical, and emotional well-being. I'm so pleased to say that we've now accomplished this goal. Next slide, please. While Santa Barbara Unified has many impressive outcomes for our students, high graduation rates, scholar awards, student being accepted to the finest universities in the world, I believe we're only as good as our lowest-performing students and our community benefits when our youth are connected and do not feel disenfranchised. At this time, I'd like to speak candidly about three main areas in our system that we need to improve in. I call them the ABCs of school improvement, and they directly relate to the goal that's being spoken about here today. And that is that every single one of our youth, every single one of our students is seen, heard, and known. A is for academics. Far too many of our students of color and students with limited English-speaking skills, students living in slow socioeconomic households, are not achieving levels on par with their more affluent and sometimes also white and Asian student peers, due to our own lack of well-defined instructional programs and support investments. Far too many of our Latino elementary students are being over-identified and misplaced into special education, when in actuality, some of them are also in the process of acquiring a second language. And far too many of the students do not see themselves reflected in the kinds of rigorous courses that make attending a four-year university possible. We need to speak about this openly and often, as we, as an entire community. The B is for belonging. The research is very clear. A sense of belonging is an essential human need. When the need is not being met, we look for a way to fill it. Our schools and community at large play a critical role in creating environments that are culturally welcoming and supportive, and where students feel safe and valued. We do not make excuses for why we can't do the work it takes to help a child. This is my expectation for every member of my staff, and I welcome this opportunity to become part of this network of leaders who join me as stewards of our community and its children. C is for connections. During the past year, we had to find new ways to connect with our students, including home visits, safely-distanced home visits, phone calls, not giving up on the second or third attempt to reach someone. This pandemic taught us some hard, yet valuable lessons about what it means to be truly connected to our families and students. We had to check our efforts against middle-class assumptions about resources, family traditions, cultural practices, political languages, language use, and learn about the strengths, challenges, hopes, and fears of all our families. Next slide. I presented this graphic for the first time at our recent state of their schools to illustrate how I plan to lead our district and organize our resources, both human and fiscal, so that our work structures are aligned in a more unified, student-centered way. This includes increasing the efforts that we know are making a difference in the lives of our students who have not traditionally been well-served or, in some cases, overlooked. For example, much of the work, which is now led by Dr. Friend Wagonek, is being carried out by our youth outreach coordinator, Ismael Huerta, our clinical youth social worker, Ali Cortez, in collaboration with my colleagues here today. The work of our counselors and teams who strive to know every student by name and face. The work of our teachers who understand and respect culture and identity. The work of our family engagement unit and language access unit to ensure authentic, two-way communication with families. And the work of our partners who understand that youth trauma can stem from childhood poverty, abuse, divorce, mental illness, and specifically the work in pandemic, during this pandemic, with, in partnerships, like the implementation of the Academic Learning Centers on the East Side by Councilmember Gutierrez, who partnered with the Saint George Nonprofit and Franklin Elementary School to provide a place for students and families to safely access school learning in our distance-learning model. Lastly, this work includes doing more to expand our networks and our partnerships so that the entire community feels the same sense of urgency and need to care for our youth and lift them up. We understand that when they rise, we all rise. As a case study, when I learned about the students' bicycle riding on State Street and heard about the reactions some were having, we immediately reached out to the students and the school staff to listen and learn why they were doing this on State Street versus their own neighborhoods. We found that they felt safer and enjoyed the attention. Our school leaders are going to continue to take a listen, learn, and lead approach while working in collaboration with partners like all of you here today. I want our young people to know that we are open to hearing from them, that we, as a community, will not criminalize this behavior, and that we will continue to check our assumptions and reactions so that we can better serve them. We cannot sit back waiting for our students to find us. We have to go to them. We have to go to our families and meet them where they're at. I want to thank all of you for having me here today, and I want you to know that I am ready to partner in all the efforts that were mentioned before me and that are upcoming following this presentation, and that our school district really cares about ensuring that, that the youth of our community, their success, is representative of what Santa Barbara stands for, which is community and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, do you have a couple of minutes if there's questions from the council members?
I am here. Yes, I'm here available till three o'clock. Thank you.
Council members, anyone at this, uh, juncture? We have other presenters. Ms. Sneddon, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I make a quick comment in case? This is not, this is not how to leave. I just want to personally, um, thank you and welcome you. And, and, um, your, your words are, are so, um, inspiring, actually, and comforting, and the work that, that you and Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez are doing for our youth. And I'm very appreciative that you're here, and I have two, two students in the Santa Barbara Public Schools right now. And, and you have just done such a remarkable job in creating community for everyone, and just thank you.
Thank you.
I, I echo those thanks, uh, Superintendent Maldonado. Thank you so much for all the work you do. And we, everyone in the community- And we, everyone in the community is so glad you're here. We look forward to working with you. So we will continue with the presentations. More good things to come, I think. Chief Malekian, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next speaker is Saul Serrano, the Executive Director from the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership.
Mr. Serrano, welcome.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for having us here today. I serve as the coordinator for the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership. And I think there was a slide that's going to come up next for our presentation. Thank you. We are a regional coordinating body. We are not a program. We work with all of the programs, so just wanted to share that with members of the public as well as council members. We are a coordinating body across the region with partnerships with the city of Galida, Carpinteria, Santa Barbara, and unincorporated parts of the county. Our effort includes a strategic plan that was adopted in 2020 focusing on six goal areas. And that strategic plan is operated through the work of a policy team that meets quarterly to receive updates on progress as well as emerging trends and crisis, you know, notification of crisis. That group also reports back to the strategy team and helps direct the strategy team. For the policy team, I do want to acknowledge that our chair for that group is Madam Mayor, who serves as the chair for the policy team. The strategy team meets monthly to review work in community as well as opportunities and as well as taking into consideration the emerging trends in crisis. And then there's a third body that is a community engagement team composed of about 45 community-based organizations and community individuals that meets every other week. During the month of January, at the start of the crisis that we saw in our community, that group met weekly to coordinate and explore, debrief and explore next steps as we were responding. As of January, the community engagement team, as well as the strategy team and the policy team, began to coordinate for us. We met, the community engagement team met the day, the Monday morning, following the incident, we had a scheduled meeting, and we did a call to action. We asked our partners to reach out to their students, even to their alumni, to find out, engage just where people were at, where their grief levels were, and coordinate accordingly and connect them to services as needed, whatever those might be, including all the way to safety net services such as food connection, food security. After that, we convened a number of special meetings where we heard feedback from those that were working directly with youth, as well as those that were on the ground at the memorial services and working with the families. From that, we gathered that there was nine priority areas that we needed to focus on. So what we did was, we looked at our strategic goals, which were already covering those voices that we heard from the community, and reprioritized. Among that, there's two that surfaced to the top, and I will share that now, them being workforce development, employment services, and educational opportunities for youth. The other one is mental health and the areas of grief counseling, but also hearing the voices of youth and hearing the voices of parents and what their experience was in response to the incidents in community, as well as others in the community who heard about it and might have been needing those services. The group continues to meet and to coordinate accordingly. The co-chairs for the community engagement team are Ricardo Venegas, which you heard earlier from the city of Santa Barbara Parks and Rec, Ally Cortez, the clinical social worker for the Santa Barbara Unified School District, Christian Hymes with the National Compadres Network, and Christina Gonzalez, who is now helping us to do accountability for our work and data tracking. We are doing ongoing assessment as we hear of the needs in community. Those will get reported through the community engagement team. We inform our strategy team and our policy team at the quarterly public meetings, as well as we hear public feedback. Again, you know, this overall effort was started 10 years ago following the incident that happened on Carrillo and State Street on March 14th, 2007, where we also saw a loss of life due to youth violence. The overall effort started off as a South Coast Task Force on Youth Gangs and has evolved over the years, now with the name South Coast Youth Safety Partnership, focusing on prevention, intervention, reentry, as well as the enforcement piece, and working with all of those partners. In our current work, we are looking to expand and coordinate with those serving the transitional-age youth population, ages 18 to 24, as we know that we need to focus our efforts as well, just as we need to enhance the prevention and the elementary piece, services to elementary and families even before elementary, to support in violence reduction, as well as partnering with county, city, and community-based leaders. I want to stop there and just thank you all, and do want to inform you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, that we will be back with a more in-depth presentation on the partnership at a later date during the council meetings. Thank you.
Appreciate your work, Mr. Serrano. Thank you. Mr. Oldham.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. And the last presenter is Ms. Isis Castaneda from the Santa Barbara County Teen Network. Isis?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you, Chief, for including us in this presentation. I'm Isis Castaneda, and I'm representing Santa Barbara County Teen Network. SBCTN was inspired by the Southern California Teen Coalition. Susan Young, many of you do know who she is, established the Santa Barbara Teen Coalition close to two decades ago. In order to be inclusive to our surrounding community members, we became the Santa Barbara County Teen Network. Our mission is to serve as a collaborative, professional networking resource for programming and activities for youth, specifically teens, in order to leverage dollars, enhance programming, and increase participation. Santa Barbara County Teen Network works together with teens, families, and agencies to provide education, recreational, therapeutic, and wellness programs. The current leadership team consists of Leonar Reyes, the Director of St. George Youth Center, YMCA, in Isla Vista, Marcus Lopez, a community outreach personnel from Santa Barbara Junior High School, Mavel Portoledo, Director of Community Learning Centers from the Turner Foundation, Susan Young, and myself. Our next networking meeting will be held on May 13th in the morning. Here are a few highlights of our networking group. Parks and Rec Department of the City of SB, in collaboration with the Santa Barbara County Teen Network, hosted for over 16 years the Teen Leadership Banquet, which recognized over 40 local teens in our communities every year. In 2020, we had to cancel due to the pandemic, and hopefully, we will be able to continue this amazing opportunity that teens and families deeply appreciate. Santa Barbara County Teen Network has shared information about teen programs during the school year and summer opportunities. We've built relationships with new staff from the different agencies. Just recently, we discussed scholarship opportunities with a direct handoff due to our strong working relationships formed over the many years we've been meeting. Many of the Santa Barbara County Teen Network members also participate with the Community Engagement Team of South Coast Youth Safety Partnership. Currently, there are a few projects that our network are working on. We are in preliminary discussions with the amazing Bucket Brigade, collaborating and providing gardening boxes for the youth at St. George Youth Center in Isla Vista. This will be a direct impact for the local Ivy youth to engage in safe, healthy activities by learning how to grow their own produce. Mental Wellness Center has provided a free monolingual Spanish support group for the moms of that area, obviously on Zoom. Several of our Santa Barbara County Teen Network members, such as the Santa Barbara Youth Council, Police Activities League, St. George Youth Center, Santa Barbara Unified School District, and CADA, are also part of the Isla Vista Coalition for Healthy Communities 805. This is a coalition that received a drug-free grant two years ago from the federal government to reduce alcohol and drugs amongst our youth. If you don't know, you now know. Ivy has been recognized as a hotspot by the federal government in our area, and many of the youth from all the surrounding communities have gone there to be a part of the college party life. Our fourth program that I would like to share with you is a direct response of the recent violence in Santa Barbara. Judith Lugo from Police Activities League, Marcus Lopez, Ally Cortez from the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and myself have created a six-week program for the summer that will serve sixth-to-ninth-grade students from the Santa Barbara community, mainly the East Side residents, who have either been directly or indirectly impacted by the violence that entered their neighborhoods. The Legacy Program, as we have named it, will be housed through Police Activities League. Marcus Lopez will be coordinating and implementing this prevention and intervention program with the support of Ally Cortez and myself, overseed by Judy from PAL. We're focusing on 10 girls and 10 boys, 10 young people, 20 young people from the different spectrums of gender. They will have support services such as health and wellness activities, fitness instruction, emotional intelligence skill-building, expedition to places they might not have had opportunities to visit, cultural competence education on the Chumash, and other cultures that have contributed to our communities. Recently, I met with a couple of the junior high girls to hear from them what they would like in this program. In that conversation, they felt secure with me to speak about the impact of the violence. It was a direct, painful experience that they shared. They do not feel safe. They are worried for their friends, their family members, and their neighborhood. They want a place to go so that they're not stuck at home feeling fearful and anxious. They want to learn new things, experience life joyfully. And I'm determined that the Legacy Program for our local children will provide a safe haven to learn, grow, connect, and laugh like all children deserve to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. Really appreciate that. Chief?
Thank you, Ms. Castaneda. And thank you for all the presenters for taking the time to be here today. And next slide, please. But I just might wrap up and turn it over to questions from the council and the public. I think one of the, I think one of the challenges for all of us is to redefine the notion of safety. I remember one time interviewing a young man at a high school as part of a scholarship application process. And this high school had a reputation for having issues related to youth violence. And I asked him if he felt safe on campus, and he said he absolutely did. And then he qualified, and he said, "I know where not to go." I think for too many of our young people, safety is defined as knowing where not to go. And I think the challenge for all of us is to change the definition of what safety means. The challenge for the police department and for all of us is not just to make arrests, but to make those arrests unnecessary. And the department is absolutely committed to community collaboration. You've seen just a sample of the effort and the commitment that Santa Barbara City is offering to its young people. And my commitment on behalf of this police department is that we will be part of that effort. And I thank you for your time today, and I've opened any questions that you may have. Next slide.
Thanks. Ms. Gutierrez will start us off on questions. We have, I'm sure, members of the public who'd like to speak. So the council will have an opportunity to make concluding remarks after public comment. Ms. Gutierrez, go ahead, please.
My question is, we're going through a transition to find a police chief. How, maybe this is a question for both the chief and Mr. Casey, how is the department going to keep the youth safety a priority when the new chief comes? What promise can you give the community that this effort of youth safety is going to continue with the new chief? What do you have in place right now that is moving us forward to youth, the youth safety?
I also want to agree with you. I think that's actually, the response to that is, I think, is fairly straightforward. The department has historically, I think, been committed to youth safety. And while the tragic events of this year certainly amplified the need for that, for example, members of the department have been involved with the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership since the beginning. I know I have been part of it long before I came to work here. Secondly, both the public and the council, as well as the city manager, have a significant voice and are going to have a significant voice in the selection of the new police chief. And I believe that if the community and the council make it clear that youth safety is one of their priorities, then that will be one of the things that comes out of this process. And lastly, and especially in this day and age, I know of very few people who would even consider applying for a police chief job who are not committed to this effort.
Mr. Casey?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Gutierrez, I agree with what the chief just said. It's a priority. For me, it's a priority for the city council. It will be a priority for the next police chief as well. And as Chief Malekian said, it is a priority for the staff that will transition between the chiefs.
Thank you. And my last question, Chief, has there been any changes to the department with staffing that address community outreach that you can share with the public?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
My question is trying to address, can you talk to the public a little bit about your community liaison officers? That position that just, it's not new, but we have officers now.
Under Chief Lynn Alprir to my arrival, she designated a lieutenant and two officers. Lieutenant is designated as the community accountability lieutenant. He does outreach to various community organizations and stays in touch with individual council members on problems of concern in their district. And then the community liaison officers are tasked with building relationships, particularly in areas that may be experiencing some problems, and trying to sort of head them off before we sort of engage in the traditional enforcement efforts. And I think behind that, or as part of our response to that, is a greater involvement of beat patrol officers. We're looking at different ways to make sure that, what we've heard from several people, is not so much that they want more policing, and they also want different policing. And they want connection with the neighborhood and connection with individuals. And our commitment is to try to move our patrol model in that direction.
All right. Very good. Any other questions, questions for Ms. Castaneda, or Mr. Serrano, or the chief at this point? Otherwise, I would ask Mr. Stowe to look at the attendees list and see if people would like to make public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Presently, we have three, sorry, four attendees who would like to comment. Anna Marie Gott, E. Howard Green, Mark Alvarado, and Victoria Valenti. And Mr. Green, I have unmuted you on our end, and you may unmute yourself and begin your comment.
Welcome. We can't hear you if you're speaking.
It appears Mr. Green is muted, self-muted. We can go to our next commenter, which will be Anna Marie Gott.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. This is a great presentation, and it probably should have come earlier during the pandemic. And I just want to mention one thing, which is that the stress that many of these children are feeling is obviously due to financial stress of their families. And this is just besides the pandemic itself. And we do not have a living wage in the city of Santa Barbara. And just imagine what stress does to adults, and then think about what it does to children. Children feel disconnected from their families. They feel tremendous amount of depression and anxiety. They have fear. And imagine bringing all of this to a classroom, and how would they be able to participate fully? Are they even getting a sleepless night, and do they know where they're going to actually sleep sometimes? So one of the things that I think that this city council has failed to do is to pass a living wage ordinance that would that would actually help provide security to some of these children and these families. There has been a number of pilot tests throughout the United States where they have given families an extra thousand dollars a month or fifteen hundred dollars a month. And that has reaped tremendous benefits. And the city really should think about putting together a program like that here instead of maybe, I don't know, funding a huge police station when we really need probably substations in our community. Or maybe we need to increase our fees for, you know, for some of the services that we actually provide in the city. Maybe we need to collect those fees. Maybe we actually need to charge the fees that are required if someone actually, you know, does work without permits. So there are a lot of things that I think that you all should be doing. And one of them is actually trying to make sure, you know, that in a situation like this, that we have some funds to actually do something, and we make some really good decision for, you know, for kids, which would let's make sure their 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 families and their parents actually can earn a living wage here in the city of Santa Barbara. And the only way they're going to be able to do that in many cases is if you actually pass that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Mark Alvarado. And please begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I think, you know, obviously, this is timely in terms of what we've experienced recently. But those of us who've been in the game for a long time know that this this situation ebbs and flows. And it's usually ebbs and flows due to a lack of resources. Resources are put in. Violence goes down, and then resources are taken out, thinking we've solved the problem, and then we're here again. You know, I am associated with youth violence, gang violence, going back to the age of eleven. Just recently, a cold case file of a friend was just reopened by the county. And in fact, I've been notified that I I will probably be interviewed by the investigators on that particular cold case as well. I'm a victim of of gun violence at the age of sixteen, seventeen, here in Santa Barbara. So I've lived this. I've lived this issue. And my and my work that I've done in my career has always been to try to help kids. And I'm thankful that you brought Ricardo Venegas forward because I worked with Ricardo, and he is an expert in what he does. And and I came to you guys last year with the human services funding, and I told you there was only seven percent of the funding for youth services. It has to change. It has to change. It's all about, you know, you it's money, money, money. It's I'm sorry, that's what it comes. I know we have homeless issues. I know we have housing issues. I know we have senior issues, infrastructure issues. But where are the priorities? Really, I mean, and I know the city can't do it all, believe me. And you have some great speakers there. Everybody you have today is qualified, and what everybody's doing, it's all good stuff. But there's just somehow to cobble the resources that you have to bolster some of these budgets to help save these kids. That's really what it comes down to. I can tell you that because we've seen it. And I've worked with Mr. Serrano, and I know exactly what he's capable of doing. And you have some great people there with you. And I just encourage you to just really look, you're coming up on budget, you're coming up on CDBG, and I just encourage you just to really think about that. Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker?
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Victoria Valente. And Victoria, you may unmute yourself and begin your comment.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm calling in support of recreational opportunities for youth growing up in this community. My children are grown up, and I always paid attention to what was going on with them as as well as their peers. So I can relay firsthand what I observed. Unless kids have access to supervision 24/7, they need to be involved in structured activities to have fun and stay out of trouble. I've seen some great programs, for example, the Youth Apprenticeship Program, and it was really nice when an ice skating rink was built. But kids need regular and continual continuous access to recreation during their free time in their neighborhood throughout their formative years. Being involved in sports serves the bill. In Santa Barbara, a natural choice is water sports and ocean activities. But the ocean isn't even accessible to kids unless they have developed into very strong swimmers. And how would our local kids do that if they don't have access to pools or aquatic programs? The kids on the east side would need to be driven to Los Baños, and besides, Los Baños is maxed out. Most community members don't have access. Many people on the east side can't swim. Swim lessons are essential, and this is a start. But swim lessons don't create strong swimmers. Kids need further opportunities and programs to develop into strong swimmers and maintain these skills to swim for the duration of their lives, as swimming is a lifetime sport. We need more pools in Santa Barbara, and Ortega Park is in the process of renovation. The small pool is going to be demolished. The city has applied for an $8.5 million grant but doesn't plan to fund a replacement pool. How about funding and constructing pool facilities that provides a what a variety of aquatic sports programs and meets the needs of the entire community of people of all ages for years to come? Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker?
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Chelsea Lancaster. And Chelsea, you may unmute yourself and please begin your comment.
Hi, everybody. I'm glad to hear the city talking about this issue today. Just wanted to name that. You know, if we claim to be progressive, that means we have to progress in terms of our ideologies, our vision, our vision for a better world, a vision where, as the Sabatista's name, building a world where all can exist. And I don't see that happening in terms of the conversation in Santa Barbara. We really have to look at what's happening with policing nationwide. The people who have been taken in our own community, like Brian Careño. This is not budgets or value statements. So if we're saying that we really care about youth safety, to spend thirty-two percent of our city budget on policing and seven percent on youth services, when there are also all kinds of organizations, grassroots organizations that are doing this work unfunded for free because we care? I don't I I love and respect the people that have presented here today, so this is not about them. But police do not keep our communities safe in the ways that y'all think they do. Police do not prevent youth violence. If we really want to talk about violence prevention, we need to talk about meeting our youth's basic needs. We need to talk about an anti-racist politic. It is not. It is not an accident that so many of our youth of color are the ones who are struggling. I was in those streets years ago. It's the same thing that's always been happening. It's the same conversation. We are stuck in the definition of insanity. Y'all keep doing the same thing over and over again, thinking it's going to fix the problem. We are the problem. The fact that our politic won't evolve, the fact that we watched the whole world watched today. And we all assumed that there would be no justice. So now we have justice for one officer, but the whole system is guilty. And again, we're approaching budget season. We can do all the presentations in the world. But if you continue to police funding, to fund police at the rate that you do, and you're going to build an $800 million police station or $8 million, whatever the cost is, it's too much. I'm asking the city of Santa Barbara to do better. I'm asking for us to progress and respond to what is happening nationwide. Our youth are not safe, and the police are not making them safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the following individuals have indicated they would like to comment. Carlos Jimenez, Renee Garcia Hernandez, Jareli, and Gabe Escobedo. And our next commenter will be Carlos Jimenez. And you may unmute yourself and begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I really believe that police and city officials should have these type of presentations, conversations about youth safety issues in both English and in Spanish, and also in the community that they serve. More community outreach needs to be done by the city administration. They need to communicate with the people and ask for their needs instead of taking it upon themselves to decide what is best for the community that they are so disconnected from. The city parks and wrecks should have a lot of work to do, and they should also include everybody from the community, starting with having more diverse camps that speak to all the kids in all the community. And also at half the cost that is currently being offered. I'd also like to give a big thank you to Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez for actually speaking and representing the people that she was elected to represent. Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker?
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Renee Garcia Hernandez. And Renee, you may unmute yourself and please begin your comment.
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I am a son, a brother, a lifelong English learner, and a queer brown person living in fear in Santa Barbara. You and we are guilty, just like Derek Chauvin today, who was found guilty for the death of George Floyd. We have failed. We have been in the streets, and this has happened for decades, for a long period of history of time. And it's time for us to start this change, starting with us. You have the power, authority, and responsibility sworn in to evolve politics and make a change for the better. Today, we have justice. Really, what we have is accountability, just for one officer, as Chelsea Lancaster stated. But we need more. And we need to start with meeting the needs of the youth and their families in our community, just like our superintendent stated, starting with the most vulnerable. Today's time, and this has been a long life standing. This is my first city council meeting, folks, and I've lived here in Santa Barbara for twenty-eight years. The lack of access to these meetings, the lack of representation in language, identity, culture in these meetings is something longstanding that standing that needs to change. If we really want to meet people's needs in a genuine and authentic way, we must start now, making these meetings accessible, pushing them back at a later time, reevaluating the structure of these meetings. It took me seven and a half clicks to get here online today, messaging folks to help me guide, guide me in the way to get here. I have a master's degree in education and leadership development. And yet, this is how hard it was to get here. I don't think I could ever see my mom here as a single mother undocumented, working three jobs. So I'm here representing her today, someone interested in this change. We really need to thank y'all. How do we meet the needs of these communities? We are not doing enough. We are guilty. Let's look at our budgets. Let's look at our thought processes. Let's call folks in that need to be at the table, or better yet, as I like to say, in the kitchen, because that's where the recipes are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the following individuals have indicated they'd like to speak. Gabe Escobedo, Jareli, and E. Howard Green. And Gabe Escobedo, I'm sorry, Gabe Escobedo, you may unmute yourself and begin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, for discussing this important topic. This conversation cannot end here in this meeting, and I'm asking for your continued involvement and to be that we all are diligent about making rapid progress on scaling these programs and their reach. Policing is not the solution. I agree with the police chief in part that for some in our community, we need to redefine safety. For others, we have always understood that we don't have safety. It is about recognizing that there are too many in our community who do not feel safe. Safety is not only about physical harms. Housing is safety. Food security is safety. Community is safety. Policing is not. For many, policing is trauma. So this work effort needs to be led by those like Dr. Hildonado, who understand the holistic approach of providing safety and resiliency for our youth. Our youth should be centered in these conversations and have their input incorporated into the solution. Additionally, we need to prevent youth from becoming entangled in our incarceration system. I believe we need to bring the Public Defender's Office and the DA's office into the conversation. We need a restorative justice program that prevents the lifelong entanglement with the incarceration system. Mr. Alvarado is spot on when he says that this is about resources. Chelsea Lancaster was right. It is time to move away from policing. Let's truly focus on public safety. Housing, food safety, food security, community, youth programs, and personal wellness. Let's answer this problem with a solution that meets the gravity of this issue. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Next speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Jareli. And you are now unmuted. And you may unmute yourself, and please begin your comment.
Thank you, council members. I also grew up here in Santa Barbara in the east side my whole life. I appreciate the recognition of the city to do more towards the youth safety. But I also want to remind that city staff that you all work for the public, therefore, public outreach should always be a priority. Our local to our local politicians, you have the power to distribute public funds in areas that are high priority. Think about the east side community. Our children live in fear to walk in the neighborhood, and our youth are not safe. My community struggles with all the issues that the rest of the city doesn't want to deal with, like homeless. Homeless is a huge issue. I'm thinking to Alejandra, our bridge was cleared, and we were able to pass through that bridge safely and without fear. But now I've seen and witnessed about twice homeless, really with their genitals out, peeing on the side of the road, on the bus, where all of our children are passing through. It's so it's sad to really see that and, you know, go through this violence in unsafe parks. I fear to even go on a walk with my little nephew or even letting my little sister, who's a teenager, go walking down our own neighborhood. Again, I've lived here my whole life. I went to Franklin Elementary School, Chattanooga Junior High, you name it, on the east side, lived here my whole life. And to still be witnessing witnessing all of this is just very sad, and I hope there is change soon. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, our final speaker for this item is E. Howard Green. And Mr. Green, you may unmute yourself and begin your comment.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you're unmuting before you tell us, and that gets the cursor up there and clicks. This is a a topic that is very important. I I would like to see things done for all the people. And in in that regard, I'm not sure I fully understand the charter. It's not right on, but the review of the police that's being done with the new commission. I I need to understand, or you all need to do something to put a web department or site on where people can review the documents and perhaps attend the the meetings, I would believe. This is a Brown Act type of commission, just like the planning and historical district commissions are. Thank you very much for for that. I I'm interested in the documents that they will see and the opportunity for some public input to that commission. And of course, when it comes back to you, we will have that. Thank you, Rich, for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Green, for your persistence. I really appreciate it. Unless someone else has raised their hand. Thank you, Mr. Green, for your persistence. I really appreciate it. Unless someone else has raised their hand, Mr. Clerk will close public comment.
Madam Mayor, there are presently no other commenters for this item.
Okay, so this is, uh, an item, we're receiving this, um, but I'll, this is the time to, uh, to make comments. Um, certainly, our budget season is starting and we'll have, uh, in-depth presentations related to uh, the Parks and Rec Department, our Police Department. Um, and, and certainly a report, uh, as Mr. Serrano said, will, will be forthcoming, related specifically to the Youth Safety uh, partnership. And I really appreciate all the work everyone's doing. I'd like to hear more about that, uh, PAL, uh, program with Ms. Lugo. I know she's worked really hard in that uh, program for many years, so. Um, a- any, uh, closing comments on this item from the council members? Ms. Gutierrez, go ahead, please.
I want to thank everybody that presented, and especially all the people that called during public comment. I know that it's difficult to log in to this technology of the go-to meeting, but it takes a lot of courage to to come in and, and voice, um, your thoughts. So thank you so much. I do want to um, read a quote from AOC that I read a couple of weeks ago. And the quote says, "The process of healing requires accountability, because without accountability, this will happen again." I think all of the speakers touched upon that it really takes the community, uh, to solve these issues we have in the community, from homeless to youth safety, to housing, um, safer, you know, to safer parks. Um, I'm very passionate about this issue. Everybody knows that I come from a background of education. I was born and raised in this community. So I just want to urge city staff and my colleagues, um, that when it comes down to budgeting and looking into the budgets in different areas of the budget that it's going to affect our children and youth, really, um, their lives are at stake, and the youth and the children are the future of the city. So what we give our children and the youth is what they are going to bloom to. So we, we really need to hold everybody accountable for every death that happens in the streets of the city, not only just in my district, but I take responsibility, um, because like many mentioned today, we're all, we're all in this together. And we all have to hold some sort of level of community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gutierrez. And so, Ms. Nunez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, um, so grateful to those who presented today and also for the public commenters. And it's really, I'd like to make an invitation that the groups who presented today, or anybody in the community, to, to please let us know specific asks for not just funding, but programs and what more could be done. I think people have so many ideas and, um, it's really encouraging to hear what's already happening, but I think we recognize there's still such a long way to go. And this was a, a great starting place to remind us of what we are doing with our youth and just, I think, we could always be doing more and, um, a really open invitation to please keep letting us know what more we can be doing.
Thank you. What struck me throughout the whole presentations was that, um, everyone was working together. There was mention of the school district employees and different community groups. We are a small community, uh, in that way, and, uh, everybody knows each other. And so I do look forward to seeing some of these, uh, programs, uh, like what's on the screen right now, more, uh, uh, jobs for our young people. That's a big solution. That is the model of homeboy industries. So, uh, we look forward to continuing these conversations. Thank you to Chief Molekian, Superintendent Maldonado, Mr. Serrano, Ms. Castaneda, and everybody who called in today. So we'll close this item with thanks and hope for a brighter future for our youth. We'll move on to item number eleven, uh, back to number eleven. And Mr. Clerk, if you would read that into the record, we will go another thirty, forty minutes and then we'll take a break. Um, but we'll get that started on this item. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The item is contracts for construction of Arroyo Borough Open Space Restoration and Trail Improvement Project.
Thanks. And, uh, maybe Mr. Benson is the presenter, or Mr. Demore. Um, what a pleasure to read this, uh, council agenda report. When you would talk about water quality and habitat restoration and all the good things that are happening, uh, with this project. Ms. Markey, welcome. Sorry, I didn't mean to figure out which, uh, or guess which staff member was coming on. You're so welcome, and thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers for having me today.
You need to speak up or turn your, your microphone louder? I don't know, um, who's in control of that?
Does that sound better?
That is a little better, yeah.
Okay, I'll try to speak loudly. Um, good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers for having me today. Uh, my name is Erin Markey. I'm the Creeks Restoration Planner here at the city's Creeks Division. Uh, to present to you on a second phase of work that we are, uh, working on at the Arroyo Borough Open Space Park. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so the project is located in the lower Arroyo Borough watershed. Uh, this is a twenty-one acre open space park that currently is accessed solely through the end of Allen Road. Um, it's, it's across, um, Los Pacitas Road from Ealing's Park. And, um, was acquired by the city, um, just a few years ago, as well as we've completed some, um, previous restoration work out there that we're now calling Phase One. Um, so this second phase of work is going to focus on the northern end of the open space park. Uh, next slide, please. So as I mentioned, uh, uh, the fourteen point seven acres on the west side of the creek, uh, was acquired by the city, um, in partnership with the Trust for Public Lands back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, this is just some kind of background of how we got to where we are today. Um, so that, that allowed this previously private property to become public open space. Next slide, please. So shortly after, uh, the acquisition was finalized, the Creeks Division began working on a restoration project along Arroyo Borough Creek. There's about eighteen hundred um, linear feet of creek frontage, and we restored the majority of it, um, with a project we completed back in two thousand, at the end of two thousand and eighteen. Um, included the removal of concrete debris and trash, several tons. Um, we actually pulled out an old car frame from one of the creek banks during our excavation. Um, we also did a large amount of grading to create an acre of floodplain habitat, so habitat adjacent to the creek that, uh, is flooded during high storm events, um, providing all sorts of water quality and habitat benefits. Uh, we also repaired several hundred feet of arroting creek banks and installed seventy-five hundred native plants out there to restore native habitat on site. Um, in total, it was about four acre restoration project that really focused on, uh, the main stem of Arroyo Borough Creek through the site. Uh, next slide, please. So as part of that, what we now call Phase One project, um, we did a lot of community outreach and stakeholder meetings, um, and several ideas of opportunities for future efforts at this park were presented to us. Um, so shortly after concluding that project, we did enough, additional, um, kind of community outreach for the public and stakeholder groups to, um, kind of solidify some of these ideas, um, and then went forward with developing our design plans. Um, and presented those to our different advisory committees, as well as, uh, the Architectural Board of Review. Uh, next slide, please. So the main, uh, project components and outcomes, uh, for what we're doing with the second phase of work includes a pedestrian bridge at the northern edge of the park, um, that will connect the open space trails with the Los Pacitas multi-use pathway that's currently under construction. Um, as part of that bridge, um, there is a adjacent existing water line that we are, um, actually going to relocate. It's a twelve inch water main that is currently within, uh, the hundred year water surface elevation. So we'll actually be raising that line four feet up under the bridge, um, to better protect it into the future from flooding. Um, we'll also be restoring the creek banks at that location along Arroyo Borough. So there's currently some armory, armoring and bank hardening along the banks where the water line crosses the creek. So we'll be taking that material out and naturalizing those creek banks so that we can, um, restore them with native vegetation. Uh, in addition, there is a small tributary drainage on the northwest corner of the site, what we're calling the Campanal drainage, and we will be doing some work to restore, uh, native wetland habitat there. And then we'll be formalizing, uh, the trail routes out on site. There's currently just sort of informal trail routes that were there when the city took ownership. So um, we'll be doing some improvements to, uh, provide better drainage and erosion control there, uh, as well as we'll be planting twenty-six hundred native plants, um, within those restoration areas, but also along the trail routes, um, to provide additional tree cover and shade um, and improve, uh, park experience. So next slide, please. Um, so this is just a overview plan sheet of the project. Um, just to orient you, to the right of the frame is Los Pacitas Road, and the pale gray strip on the edge on the western edge of Los Pacitas Road is the, uh, multi-use bike path that's, that's currently under construction. Um, and so the open space park is currently accessed via the end of Allen Road, which is to the south and below the edge of this page. Um, so we are just kind of doing some trail improvements to the in the northern portion of the park, and that's shown, um, in those areas that are colored orange. Um, the box to the upper left highlights, uh, the tributary drainage, the Campanal drainage, where we'll be doing some grading to, uh, restore that area and, uh, allow that tributary to, um, meander through its historic floodplain. In addition, there's a small elevated boardwalk proposed there, um, just a little wooden boardwalk that will pull, um, tr- trail park users um, up safely out of the, um, wooded channel there, providing them all-weather access while also protecting those, uh, wetland um, plants and habitat that, that will be recreating there. And then finally, uh, the pedestrian bridge, um, highlighted with the other box on the right of the frame, across Arroyo Borough Creek. Um, next slide, please. Um, so here's just a zoomed in of that area. Uh, we're proposing an eighty-five foot long bridge, um, that will have a four-foot, uh, overlook on the south side of it, so a little bump-out platform that will allow park visitors to kind of pause and rest and check out the creek there, as well as, um, some of the new floodplain habitat that we've created just downstream of here. Um, the bridge itself is fairly similar in size to the, the bridge that was installed previously across Mesa Creek, just downstream as the lower entrance to the Douglas Preserve. Um, I believe that's a seventy-eight foot long bridge, so, so very similar in size. Um, in addition, we've been working with Public Works Department, Water Resources Department to relocate an existing twelve inch water main, as I mentioned, that's, that's shown just upstream of the bridge, and that will actually be, um, relocated to the underside, under and downstream side of the proposed new bridge. Um, so that will be better protected in the future, and it also allows us to restore an additional hundred feet of Arroyo Borough Creek upstream. Um, let's see, I guess the next slide. Um, so that's kind of the project overview. We are here today seeking council approval of the construction contracts so that we can get started with this project. Um, these are the overall cost breakdowns. The bids that we received were, uh, very close to our engineer's estimate. Um, we are looking to award the civil construction contract to Lash Construction, who was the lowest bidder, and the landscape to Landology, um, who was also the lowest bidder. Um, and then there's additional design consultant contracts, um, to, um, have the support of the engineers that designed the project, um, during construction. Next slide, please. Um, so if awarded today, we are expecting that our, um, construction start date would be towards the end of the, uh, end of next month, in May. Um, and that the grading and big heavy equipment construction work, including the bridge installation, would be complete, uh, around the end of September. And that then the landscaping work about six to eight weeks later would be complete before the end of November. Um, and we're working closely with Public Works on this effort and coordinating as well with the multi-use pathway project. Um, and yeah, I guess that concludes the presentation. If there's any questions?
Thanks, Ms. Markey. Um, colleagues, Mr. Friedman, go ahead with questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, Ms. Markey, for the presentation. Just one question, uh, when we, when we go forward and do the, the plantings and the vegetation, trees and everything, are you, are there, is there going to be a community involvement day, like in Phase One, where we have the community come out and participate in plant, in the plantings that took place? Uh, I think it'd be a great opportunity, so just wanted to check, or is, uh, this can be staff-driven?
Ms. Markey, are you there? There she is.
Yeah, sorry. Um, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, Mr. Friedman, thanks for the question. Yes, um, so the, the contract that's here before you is for the landscaper to install the bulk of it. Um, we would love to have community events, um, the timing could work out really well, possibly, that we could even do something as part of Creek Week. Um, I just don't know that we've had the internal discussions yet, whether those types of events are happening, everything that's been going on with COVID. We haven't had such events, but I, I would hope by that timeframe of September, October, November of next year, that that would, that would be able to do that, because that was so well-received during the Phase One, um, restoration effort.
Great. Yeah, that was such a great, um, community building event during the first phase, and so in the future, I'm sure that the community will want to be involved with this, that Allen Road neighborhood, so thank you.
Ms. Harmon, questions from Ms. Markey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Markey. Just a, a quick question. Um, I've heard from a constituent that there is quite a bit of dry, dead brush in some of the areas here, not necessarily directly adjacent to the creek or in the riparian environment, but sort of in the meadow. And I'm wondering if, um, part of this effort will include removing that brush or making sure that it's fire-safe and, um, if not, whether we can, um, have folks look at that while they're out there doing this work. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Harmon. So I believe what you're speaking of is there's large areas of what are just annual weeds, um, essentially different types of mustard and hemlock and, um, annual weeds that die back each year. Um, so a portion of that area is part of our restoration and will be being converted to, um, wetland vegetation, as well as we're planting three hundred oak trees out there. So the hope, um, is in the long run that those will shade out and outcompete some of those annual grasses. Um, and we are looking at ways of, um, managing that annual weed coverage, um, to provide better habitat. But currently, it's, um, we, we inspect the site annually with the fire department as far as our required fire clearances, and that is not currently part of the, um, the clearance that we are required to do for, for fire safety.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Madam.
Mr. Jordan, questions?
Sure. Hey, Ms. Markey. Um, so I think the drop-in, the set-in bridge is pretty close to the entrance to Ealing's Park, right?
Yes, Councilmember Jordan, the, that is correct. Um, it's fairly adjacent to being right across from the Ealing.
So that leaves like, and I, I would suspect, um, Ms. Harmon's talking about the same place. That kind of leads a bubble going downstream next to the roadway before the creek comes back over to lead the roadways, where there's just, uh, undergrowth, um, palm trees and, and so it's on the east side of the watershed. Do we have a long-term plan still, another phase somewhere in the world, that we're gonna get in there and actually clean that up and get out anything that's not native and, and put some regular plantings in there, too?
Uh, Councilmember Jordan, I, I apologize. I think, uh, Mrs. Harmon's question, I was thinking of a I think Mrs. Harmon's question, I was thinking of an entirely different area of the open space on the west side of the creek. So if we're talking about the Six Sicker First on the east side of the creek.
So if you're on the east side of the creek, below the drop-in bridge and above where the creek comes way back over next to Las Pacitas, there's like a big brown plain, like a plain of land there that's got some palm trees in it and just lots of undergrowth. Might be home to some homeless now and then because of the amount of undergrowth. And I'm just wondering, will we ever do restoration work in that section, too?
I don't know if Mr. Benson wants to weigh in on this, but we don't have any current plans to do. There's no capital project outstanding to do work in that area. To be honest, a lot of that area is actually native vegetation at that point. I don't know if Cameron has anything to add.
No, that's accurate. We do not have plans for Phase Three. Most of that is, is, as Ms. Markey pointed out, most of that is all native plants in that area, except for the palm trees that you're talking about, some of which were removed for the multi-use path. But those, you know, those, those large trees are part of the skyline in that area. And so we've been working with the, with the community with regard to all of the trees on that property. And there are long-term plans to get other native riparian skyline trees in that area. But it's a, it's a multi-decade plan to transition to that.
Very good. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Benson.
Thank you both. Any other questions at this point? If not, we'll see if there's public comment. Mr. Stowe?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Presently, we have one public commenter, Lee Heller. And Lee, you've been unmuted, and you may get your comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Good timing. I just got back from walking dogs. I want to second what Councilmember Harmon was talking about. I go to that beautiful area quite often, now that I live on the Mesa. And there's a lot of fuel load in those open meadows that I, I understand that the staff speaker has addressed that issue in terms of fire inspection. But I would say that.
You cut out Ms. Heller? Oh, no. I think we lost her. Ms. Heller?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, for some reason, the system remuted me. Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as I was saying, the fuel load in those meadows is pretty significant. This is well west of the creek, to correct what Councilmember Jordan may have misunderstood. And I would encourage the fire department to go back and re-inspect because that's a fuels load that could easily ignite, spread up Campanell Hill and across the road and over into Ealing's Park. And now that I live in the area, I'd hate to see us all burned down. So I love all the other things that are being proposed as a user of that area. It's really lovely, and I encourage anyone who hasn't been there to take a visit. But I also hope there'll be more investigation with load management. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Clerk, anyone else raising their hand?
Madam Mayor, there are presently no additional speakers for this item.
We'll close public comment with thanks. This is an item that does require a motion. If you take a look at your report, it's a series of staff recommendations related to awarding the contracts, rejecting a bid protest, and increasing appropriations in the funding, Mr. Friedman.
So thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank our staff for the great work that you've done on this. It's, the Phase One was outstanding. Quite another open space and just a really great location for our community. In particular, we're looking at improved water quality, as well as our creeks, which are feed out to our ocean. So it's just real great. And we've seen some of the improvements in the drainage that came in from Phase One. So this is moving that forward and includes the wildlife habitat. So our wildlife has that transitional corridor to go. And also, it really connects, it's going to be a great addition once we have the multi-use bike path in there that we'll be able to bring people through the open space preserve on the bridge and then go down to the beach. So it's just gonna provide a lot of recreational opportunities. And then all the drainage improvements and the trail improvements, it's just a tremendous effort. So very supportive of it. And in regards to the fire issues, this is an issue that neighborhood, there's, due to the high usage of it, especially for the beach, there's a lot of challenges that are going on in that community and very limited options. So I have been engaged with the neighborhood down there in terms of how we can look to prepare for if there were a fire event. And so in terms of our Community Wildfire Protection Plan update, I've been talking with our fire department staff, and we are going to be doing some outreach and with some of the neighbors down there and looking at the whole, the whole issue with Ealing's Park and going up the hill. So how we can as a plan for that eventuality. And then in terms of the actual work that's being done, it will, it will address some of the vegetation issues. But that's going to be an ongoing challenge that we just need to stay atop of. So there are discussions with the community already taking place in our fire department. And it's a really actively engaged community in the Allen Road neighborhood on a lot of these issues. So I appreciate Ms. Heller for raising that. And with that, I'd like to, now we can make the motion to move the staff recommendation. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Sneddon, you have a second?
I will second. And I just, I want to make a few comments. I'd love to see the progress of this project over the time. And I may not have my history correct, and you could correct me, but I'm thinking back to Vandy White, when he was a planning commissioner, and then on council, and former mayor Helene Schneider, this council member, and then mayor through, you know, the starting of this project. And then you, Madam Mayor, as a citizen and then council member, and now as mayor. And Mike Jordan, when he was on the Creek Committee and then planning commission, and now now. And I think even Chairman Benson was maybe on the Creek Committee when this was all first happening. So it's, I know this isn't the, you know, it's, each, each bit is a piece and an added part of it. But it's just, it's so exciting to see it coming so close. So happy day.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon, your comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to echo my colleagues here. I love this. I so appreciate getting an overview of what we're going to be doing. And this project accomplishes so many of our goals as a city. You know, it facilitates access to open space, it preserves and improves water quality, it prioritizes our natural habitat. These are all things that, as a city, we have very, very clearly spoken with one voice about the need to prioritize. And I think it's particularly important as we move forward with conversations about increasing density and housing and what the needs of our community are in connection with housing, that we simultaneously take opportunities like this one to preserve and protect our open space. So with that, I think the motion was made and seconded, but I will be very happily voting in favor of it. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm remembering when, I think it was 25 large homes were proposed for that area. And it took a lot of effort to turn it into public open space. And it does make up a triangle with the Ealing's and Douglas Family Preserve and spills out onto the beach there. What a beautiful outcome for that area. And I'd like to thank Creeks and Public Works for working on the bike path and the neighbors who all take care of that area. Dan McCarter specifically, and other people who've looked out for the Allen Road experience. So I will be voting for this motion, too, so that we can put this project in motion. And we'll be down there visiting and hiking and enjoying it as well. So. Mr. Stowe, we will take a roll call vote, and then we'll take a break on the meeting.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is a motion by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, for the staff recommendation. Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yeah.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Yes.
Mayor Maria?
Aye. That was unanimous, Mr. Stowe. We'll take a break. We'll come back and finish up with our budget item and then the hazard pay item. We're in recess. Thank you. If you would read that into the record, please.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item recommended two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2022 and 2023.
Thanks, Mr. DiMartini and Mr. Casey to start us off on our two-year financial plan. There you are. Welcome.
Yes. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini, and I am the city's finance director, and it is my pleasure today to present a very high-level overview of the city administrators' recommended fiscal year 2022 and 2023 budget for the city of Santa Barbara. Next slide, please. The agenda for today's presentation is to provide a very high-level overview of the proposed budget, including the major work efforts that are included as priorities in the budget. I'll provide a general fund recap and an outlook as to what's been included in the proposed budget for the two fiscal years. Also, provide a very high-level overview about what the City Council can expect to hear in the coming months in regards to the enterprise funds and the internal service funds. I will also provide a detailed listing of all of the budget review calendar items, when the public can anticipate hearing about budget-related items at both the Finance Committee and also at the Greater City Council, and then staff would be more than happy to take your questions and hear the discussion. Next slide, please. The city has posted the proposed budget on the city's website, so members of the public can access the very detailed budget book at www.santabarbarca.gov/budget. The document has been posted as of 2:00 this afternoon, and it is available for public access. Next slide, please. So now I just want to give a very high-level overview of the budget and talk about some of the major work efforts next. Next slide, please. The preparation of and the timeline that dictates when the city issues its budget is documented in the city's charter. The city's charter does say that the budget must be submitted no later than 60 days prior to July 1st, July 1st being the first day of each fiscal year. And so that date falls on today, which gives around 60 days, a little bit more, on this fiscal year, where the City Council will be able to hear presentations from staff about what is included in the proposed budget, and then give you an opportunity to deliberate and provide your final recommendations. This is the first year of this budget cycle. Council may recall that the city prepares a two-year financial plan. This first year, the fiscal year 2022, is the first year of the financial plan, where it's the operating budget and the capital budget for fiscal year 22. Next slide, please. The budget document that you receive today is a very long, extensive document. There is a great deal of information in there that staff believe is important and vital for the City Council to receive and to review and to ask questions of and discuss with staff to make the best decision possible about the use of our financial resources. You'll find that there is an overview budget message at the very beginning of the budget book from the city administrator, which outlines many of the major assumptions and priorities in the proposed budget, as well as some of the major work efforts that have been included and funded in that budget as well. You will see a number of summary schedules in regards to our revenues and expenditures, positions, capital projects, other projects as well, and there will be a two-year plan document for each department. Each department has a section in the budget book detailing all of the specific priorities and financial considerations for each department by which they will operate. All that information you'll be able to find in the budget book itself. Next slide, please. May come as no surprise in conversations we've been having with you as of late during our financial quarterly projections and other presentations, the city is still encountering impacts, economic impacts related to COVID-19. There continues to be a great deal of economic uncertainty in regards to the city's revenue sources in our budget that directly impacts our ability to continue to deliver services. Since COVID began just a little over a year ago, the city is projected to realize approximately $35 million less revenue by the end of the current fiscal year. It's a significant revenue loss across all of the city's funds. In order to balance the budget over the past couple of years, to sort of account for that revenue, to account for that impact, the city has needed to reduce our expenditures and has also needed to dip in to the general fund reserves in order to balance the budget, both in the current fiscal year and what is being projected in next fiscal year. The city has been able to replenish those reserves over the past 10 years following the Great Recession, and it's a really good thing that the city has prioritized at the City Council's direction, replenishing those reserves, because those reserves were used and are planned to continue to be used in the current fiscal year and next fiscal year in order to balance. The contingency reserve is projected to largely be depleted by the end of fiscal year 21. In fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23, it is still projected this time to dip into those reserves at a very modest level. It's important to note here that the recently approved American Rescue Plan Act that was signed by President Biden last month will offer some relief to the city of Santa Barbara. In that $1.9 trillion relief package, there is just over $22 million that is being allocated to the city of Santa Barbara, and that will be over the course of a year. So around $11 million of that will be received next month in May of 2021. And next week, staff will be bringing an item to the Finance Committee to receive a presentation in regards to the overview of that relief package and to hear staff's recommendation about how those funds can be used and receive direction, and that will come to the City Council at a later time. But that relief package is meant to offset the significant loss of revenue that the city has already lost, and the amount of money that the city will be getting in that relief package is far less than the total of the $35 million that the city is projected to lose. Next slide, please. This slide here summarizes by fund and by revenue source, the lost revenue that staff is projecting from when COVID began to the end of the current fiscal year, and as you can see, in total, it's approximately $35 million. The revenue sources that the city has felt the most significant impact is in the general fund in both transient occupancy tax and sales tax, again, which comes as no surprise. The retail industry and the hotel industry has been hit very, very hard and significantly with the various stay-at-home orders and the reduced economic activity in the greater Santa Barbara area. So those revenue sources have seen significant decline in revenue. You'll see our departmental revenues as well. The city has either had to cancel or delay many of the programs offered in both recreation and parks and many other departments. Downtown parking had a significant loss of revenue as well from a significantly less volume of parking activity going on in our city's parking lots, and then the waterfront as well with pressure on lease payments and parking revenue as well. Next slide, please. The recommended budget also articulates, particularly in the budget message itself, many of the major work efforts that even though there are limited resources, the city administrators' recommended budget includes funding for many critical projects that the City Council has articulated to us over the past few months that they want funded in the proposed budget. And this list here just includes a very short list of some of those priority projects. It includes restoring economic vitality citywide, following sort of the impacts of post-COVID and how the city continues to support retail and other economic activities citywide. It will be prioritizing funding for the new police station. The Finance Committee just turned a presentation in regards to the rate setting for the Community Choice Energy Program, which is scheduled to go live at the early part of fiscal year 2022. The city continues to program its Measure C capital project funding to prioritize the investments and maintenance of many of the city's critical capital infrastructure facilities. There will also be funding for a state street master planning process that has just recently begun, and then also funding for the Delegara Plaza project to revitalize that area. And then also, construction is scheduled to begin in the Library Plaza in the next number of months. And there are many, many more priority projects and initiatives that staff are very excited to talk to the City Council about in the coming months during many of the budget presentations that will be coming. Next slide, please. So now I'd just like to give a few slides of a high-level overview of the major considerations and trends in the general fund. Next slide, please. This slide here provides a high-level overview of the multi-year forecast process that staff produced in conjunction with this budget. Council may recall that we held a very detailed work session with you back in February, where we spent a great deal of time talking about the general fund revenue sources and expenditures and our forecast assumptions. This model has continued to be updated throughout the past number of months as we developed our budget. It shows in the gray bars what the projected ending fund balance is projected to be in the general fund over the course of the next few years. The red bar shows our expenditures, and the green dotted line shows our revenues. As you can see, over the past two years and being projected in the next two fiscal years and beyond, the expenditures are greater than our revenues. So we continue to grapple with a structural budget deficit, requiring a minimal use of reserves, and continuing to control our expenditures in order to balance the budget. So we continue to have some challenges ahead, but staff will be presenting ways in which we've balanced the budget. I'll provide an overview of that today, and we'll go into that in a great level of detail over the coming months. Next slide, please. This slide shows a high-level overview in the general fund of our revenues being projected, both in the current fiscal year and the prior two fiscal years, and in the budget years, and the expenditures, and what the projected deficit is projected to be in that timeframe. During the quarter-two financial projection report, which was recently updated back in February, During the quarter two financial projection report, uh, which was recently updated back in February. We indicated to the city council that the, the most current projection for the deficit in this current fiscal year is approximately seven million dollars. Which effectively will reduce our contingency reserves down to close to nothing, really only leaving disaster reserves. In the next fiscal year's budget, fiscal year twenty-two, we are balancing the budget by controlling expenditures significantly. Um, but also, um, requiring a very minimal and modest use of reserves. Which really is a, is a positive sign, looking at the budget in totality. Um, because staff continues to control expenditures to the best of our ability, holding positions vacant and such. Um, and continuing to look very closely at our revenue sources to be very realistic about what we can expect to achieve. And all at the same time, um, not having to lay off staff and continuing to work with our bargaining units. Um, so the, the, the strategic leveraging of a very minimal amount of reserves i- is being projected and proposed here. Um, which is a sign of, of us getting out of this post-COVID, um, uncertainty that we're in, moving in the right direction. Next slide, please. This is our very high-level outlook of our general fund, both on the revenues and the expenditure side. As I mentioned earlier, sales tax and transient occupancy tag, tax took the most significant hit during COVID. Uh, T O T is likely to rebound quicker, um, than a sales tax will. Um, staff believes in working, um, in, in taking in, um, a lot of great, uh, economic forecasting information. That the, that the hotel industry is likely to rebound fairly quickly, uh, due to a lot of pent-up demand for travel. Particularly for those, uh, folks that don't feel comfortable yet for flying, uh, driving to a, a close location like Santa Barbara is very appealing. Uh, so staff has built that into our T O T revenue projection. Sales tax, on the other hand, will recover, uh, that all signs point to that. But it will be a much slower, steady recovery over the course of a few fiscal years. Again, many, uh, businesses continue to be hit hard from COVID and so they'll take some time to recover. Staff have in, have included a full expenditure projection in the proposed budget. Uh, again, a majority of the city's expenditures, uh, pay for staff, both the salaries and fringe benefits, including pension costs. Uh, which continue to rise during the forecast period, uh, during the budget period. And also non-salary expenses like contracts and supplies and materials and construction. Um, cost, those, those costs continue to increase as well. So we continue to have our pressures on the expenditure side. Next slide, please. This slide here provides a very high-level, um, overview of the major revenue sources in the general fund. Uh, and the pie chart shows you the proportional share of those major, uh, of those major sources. Again, the most, uh, the, the largest, uh, sources of revenue in the city's general fund continue to be sales tax. Both our, our, our normal Bradley Burns, uh, sales tax at one percent. Uh, in fiscal year twenty-two, that's coming in at twenty-two point six million dollars. But then also our Measure C district sales tax, uh, that's just over twenty-three million dollars. Property tax continues to grow very steadily and has not been significantly impacted, um, due to COVID. So growth is still, um, anticipated in property tax, uh, at over forty-two million dollars. And then you can see some of the other, uh, major revenue sources in the general fund here as well. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the major categories of expenditures in the city's general fund. Again, as it comes as no surprise, the majority of the city's expenditures, um, pay for staff, pays for the staff that deliver services to the community. Uh, just around sixty-eight percent of the total general fund budget. And you can see some of the smaller areas that are funded, um, through the general fund, supplies and services. Um, capital is a significant, uh, piece of the pie and that's primarily funding directly from the Measure C district sales tax. I- is, is solely dedicated to capital, um, and maintenance and improvements and investment in our capital infrastructure, um, citywide. Next slide, please. I mentioned earlier that due to the, the projected structural deficit, um, that staff has been projecting in the multi-year forecast. Uh, similar to, um, a significant portion of the, of a solution to solving, um, the current fiscal year budget, um, problem. Um, staff are projecting to, uh, implement a number of departmental budget reductions in the current fiscal year. I'm sorry, in next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The total expenditure reductions at, and in all departments in the general fund totals around six point three million dollars. It's a significant, uh, uh, reduction to the, the totals citywide, um, general fund budget. There are multiple ways in which departments are proposing to achieve savings. And that will be, uh, presented to the city council during many of the budget presentations in the coming weeks. Uh, but, um, a, a very significant portion of that savings is coming from holding positions vacant. It's a similar strategy that was implemented in the current fiscal year. In total, there are twenty-six positions across many departments, uh, that are, that are planned to be held vacant in order to achieve salary savings. Uh, as far as labor concessions, what's, what's included in the fiscal year twenty-two, uh, proposed budget? Is only, uh, any approved, uh, cost of living adjustments for the city's bargaining units have been included. There are no additional, um, labor, cost of living adjustments that have been incorporated into the recommended budget. And then, as I mentioned earlier, uh, in order to balance the budget at the end of the day, in fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. It does require a very minimal, um, but strategic use of reserves. That we continue to have available in order to see us through this economic, um, difficult time. Next slide, please. This slide here provides a very high-level overview of the general fund capital priorities. Again, the majority of the city's, um, general fund capital is funded through, uh, the Measure C district sales tax. Uh, again, just over twenty-three point seven million dollars. Um, the pie chart on the right shows you where that twenty-three point seven million dollars is proposed to be allocated in fiscal year twenty-two. Uh, uh, as in prior years, a vast majority of that continues to go towards maintaining the city's street infrastructure. Uh, and but as you can see, it crosses multiple levels and multiple disciplines, um, for funding allocations. The general fund does, uh, contribute around eight hundred thousand dollars, is, is projected to do so in fiscal year twenty-two. And there are a few projects, uh, supporting the fire department and the library with some system, uh, improvements. As well as the Eastside Neighborhood Park and some phone and voicemail upgrade projects that will, that will, um, benefit citywide, um, department staff. Next slide, please. This slide here, uh, shows you after we've taken into consideration. All of the, um, all of the revenue sources and the expenditures that are being projected in the next two fiscal years. What impact that will have on the city's general fund reserves. And so the, the red line here shows you what the policy target should be. Um, based on city council resolution that was adopted, um, requiring that. That ten percent of the annual operating expenditures go, are, are dedicated towards contingency reserves. And fif- fifteen percent of annual operating expenditures are dedicated to disaster reserves totaling twenty-five percent. That's what that red line represents. And as you can see, the years following the Great Recession, uh, where we had to dip into our reserves to balance the budget. The city council had prioritized steadily replenishing those reserves over the course of seven years. And was able to actually meet the reserve policy the past few years prior to COVID hitting. But as you can see, that, that policy line continues to grow as our expenditures grow, but our reserve balance has been declining. Um, because of our need to dip into them. And that gap is fairly wide. It was wider than, than what the city experienced, um, during the Great Recession. Again, as I mentioned earlier, uh, President Biden's, uh, rescue package that was recently, um, put into law. Uh, and the, and the, and the relief money, the rescue money that the city will be receiving to recover some of its revenue loss. Will surely help, um, with our reserve position. And again, that will be a conversation staff will have, starting with the finance committee next week and then eventually with the city council, um, during our budget and conversations with you. Next slide, please. So next, I'll just provide a very high level, a high-level overview of what to expect, uh, in regards to the city's enterprise and internal service funds. Next slide, please. The list on the left provides just a list of all the enterprise funds that the city has. Again, we went over this in a little bit of high-level, uh, detail during the work session we had back in February. The list on the right provides a, a list of the internal service funds that the city has as well. And similar to the general fund, staff will present very high-level, um, assumptions and forecasts for both revenues and expenditures. What implications that might have on the reserves in all of those funds. Many of the capital improvement, uh, program and pri- programs and priorities, any fee changes that there may be. Um, staff will present any impacts in regards to COVID that some of these enterprise funds might be experiencing, particularly the waterfront and downtown parking. And then also any priority projects, um, or, um, in budget reductions that they are, that they have incorporated into their budget proposals. So over the course of the next two months, staff will be presenting this information to you at various times and will welcome your feedback. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to provide a listing of all of the dates that staff will be presenting budget information to both the finance committee and the city council. Next slide, please. So earlier today, staff just, uh, made a very high-level presentation, um, announcing that the budget was being adopted. And gather any feedback. That meeting has already occurred. Today, we are with you, uh, this afternoon to provide a very high-level overview of, of the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. The items denoted in red are presentations that staff will be making to the finance committee. Um, beginning at twelve o'clock, they took an action today to have their meeting start at twelve o'clock to ensure that there's ample time, um, for public discussion. We will begin, uh, departmental budget presentations with the city council, starting on May third. Beginning with the library and the airport. Next slide, please. Budget sessions will continue with the city council on May fifth, seventh and tenth. And you can see the departments that will be delivering presentations to you at that time. Next slide, please. And then again, on May nineteenth, twentieth and twenty-sixth, again, you can see that there are a number of departments that will be prepared. To present their budgets, uh, proposals to you as well and, and gain your feedback. Next slide, please. And then finally, on June ninth, um, in the evening, the finance committee's budget recommendations will be, uh, delivered to the city council. And then city council can begin their deliberations on the recommended budget. And then make, uh, provide your final direction to staff to move forward. On June fifteenth, there'll be a Proposition Two eighteen hearing on the proposed fee changes. And then, uh, the schedule is to have the city council adopt the budget on June twenty-second. Next slide, please. The recommendation, uh, before you this afternoon is to receive the recommended two-year financial plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Including the recommended operating and capital budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And also hear a report from staff in connection with the filing of the recommended two-year financial plan. And approve of the proposed schedule of city council budget review meetings and public hearings. And that concludes my presentation. I just want to say that I want to thank the dozens and dozens of staff that have been involved in the budget process over the past many months. They've spent countless hours and have done a, a great deal of analysis in another very challenging budget year, um, for the city. And I have a lot of respect and admiration for the staff that have been involved. So, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And I'll add that you did all this budget work under the stress of pandemic, Mr. DiMartini. So I'm grateful to all the staff too. But come back because I think Mr. Friedman has a question for you. I, I have one too, but go ahead, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini and Madam Mayor and our entire staff. Uh, this is a very, um, stressful time of year. There's a lot going on with pandemic. I just have one question because I'm gonna have a lot of questions over the coming weeks for you, so don't need to put them all out there now. But, um, what is the total budget of the entire organization we have in this? It's a hundred and sixty-eight million approximately for general fund. But just, um, overall, what is the, the total? I believe last year was two hundred and ninety-two million or something like that. But just so the public knows, when you factor in all the enterprise funds, and that's the only question I have. And if we don't have it now, we can get it later.
It's like a quiz.
No, no problem, I know. It's just over three hundred million dollars citywide. I'm going to that, there's a summary schedule on the front page, which I'm trying to find, but it's. Just over three hundred million dollars citywide for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
And thank you. That's, that's it. I just wanted to get a breadth of everything we do because we focus a lot on the general fund up here, but we do so much more than just the general fund. So, thank you, Mr. DiMartini.
My question would be on slide fourteen. Whenever it said as other, I'm like, what's in there? So it was other revenue and it looked like a big-ish number, uh, Ms. Hamilton or Mr. Hamilton. Other revenues that, uh, forty-five point four, is that the utility users' tax? Some of those other tax revenues, Mr. DiMartini.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for asking that question. I also questioned the other line items in tables as well. So yes, that line is primarily made up of some of the, um, it's actually not the other taxes, the user utility tax line item is in that other taxes line. The twelve point six million dollar number in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The other revenues number is primarily made up of, uh, the largest piece is departmental revenues. So, um, departments like, um, parks and recreation and police, where they generate their own revenue for various programs that they may offer. That's where that revenue is recorded. Um, other, other revenue lines in that item include investment income. So on the, on the income that we, that we, uh, realized from the investments that the city makes, it's recorded in that grouping as well. Um, and there are a number of other, um, sort of smaller, um, one-off revenue sources that are also included in that grouping as well.
Right. And then just to let the public know, the city makes very, very conservative investments. Um, by law, we can't really, um, do anything too radical with our money, with your money. So I don't see any other questions. Let's ask our clerk if, um, people are raising their hands in the go-to webinar. Uh, audience, Mr. Stowe.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We presently have two, uh, commenters for this item, Anna Marie Gott and Lee Heller. And Anna Marie, uh, you have been unmuted and you may begin your comment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. So in the last, uh, discussion that we had earlier regarding safety. Uh, a lot was said about, you know, funding and reprioritizing where money goes. Um, I'd like to give you some ideas about how to collect some funding. Do you know that there are a lot of fees that are uncollected, um, and that's associated with projects that have gone, um, you know, partially through the system? Why aren't we collecting those fees? I recently looked at a project and fees from two thousand and nineteen were still uncollected. And it, it was flagged in a cella, but obviously, you know, no one has done anything to collect the fees. So I'm asking why? Cause that can help your bottom line. Uh, did you know that staff actually, um, gives ministerial approval? And they're supposed to be collecting fees and sometimes they do not collect the fees and they don't actually collect the documents such as design files. So we can even see what, what was approved. Transfer of ownership for that cannabis, uh, permit that you guys, uh, you know, just heard about? Well, did you know that I sent an email to Matt for? I think there actually is a problem because they expanded, uh, their, uh, their footprint. And they don't seem to have, you know, this updated, uh, um, parking. That they actually won the contract with. So I'm not sure that they actually should still have that permit. And did you know you can revoke it? Um, why don't we have a transfer of ownership ordinance for cannabis? Did you just see that, that, what was it called? Glass door or glass house down in Carpinteria? Just sold for five hundred million dollars? You cannot tell me that some of these cannabis, uh, permits are not going to be sold or people aren't going to merge with and have an IPO. The city should be profiting. Every time a parking requirement is not met and we go ahead and we allow someone to reduce their parking requirement. We don't collect fees, except for a tiny fee, but not a long-term fee that is commensurate with the actual parking, uh, space. Which is tens of thousands of dollars that we could actually be ke- be keeping. And using for another purpose. What about all of the illegal short-term vacation rentals that could be used for housing? And all of the taxes that we have not actually collected? We don't have anybody really focusing on this and what we do have is glacial. Glacial change and glacial.
Think, thanks. Actually, that's, those are good suggestions. Let's, let's collect on fees or other areas if we're not, if we're not finding some money. So thanks. Um, another speaker? Mr. Stone?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Uh, presently, there are no other speakers, uh. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Presently, there are no other speakers indicated for this item.
Okay, we'll close public comment and it looks like we need to receive this. We've heard our, we've heard our report and then we approve the schedule. Mr. Friedman comments or a motion? Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quickly again, want to want to thank all the staff and all the departments for putting together this budget under the challenges of of COVID and for doing the actual work. We're having to hold a lot of positions vacant as we've seen. And so we're gonna have a lot of questions from council from finance over the coming month. And I look forward to having those discussions on our our budget priorities. And so with that, I'll I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll I'll go ahead and second it and add thanks to the finance committee, which this is your busiest time of year. And so thanks for all the, thanks in advance for all the work you're going to be doing, so. Well, we'll take a roll call vote then on this motion to move our to move our budget process forward.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a motion by council member Friedman, seconded by council member, pardon me, seconded by Mayor Mario for the staff recommendation. Council member Snedden.
Yeah.
Council member Friedman.
Yes.
Council member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Oscar Gutierrez.
Aye.
Council member Alejandro Gutierrez.
Yes.
Council member Harmon.
Yes.
Mayor Maria.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you to Mr. DiMartini and all the budget staff and all the department heads and all the business managers and everyone who put this together. And it's not entirely good news on the budget, but thank goodness that we had a reserve and we were able to use those emergency funds, exactly what they were set aside for. Mr. Casey, much thanks to you and your and your staff, sir. Closing that item, we move to number fourteen. If you would read that into the record, Mr. Clerk, and then Mr. Friedman has a has a statement.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item fourteen, request from council members Megan Harmon and Oscar Gutierrez to discuss an urgency ordinance for hazard pay for onsite grocery and drug retail workers.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I need to recuse myself from this item because my employer and my source of income may be affected.
Great. Thanks for that. When two council members put forward a memo, they introduced the subject. Mr. Gutierrez or Mayor Protem Gutierrez, are you starting?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I and council member Harmon feel very passionate about being able to help out the the employees that have sacrificed so much to be able to serve us in a time of crisis. And and those being specifically, in this case, the grocery employees. They they really were there when so many other businesses were were shut down, they they still came in and worked. And and we want to be able to honor them by helping them out with a bit of a hero's pay. And that's the basis of the the ordinance and resolution here. So I'll move it or allow Ms. Harmon to take over from here.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Protem Gutierrez. I appreciate you setting up this conversation. And I'm just gonna add a little bit here. I think in many ways, this issue that we're bringing forward sort of speaks for itself. COVID nineteen has been immeasurably difficult for our community in so many ways. But I think one of the things that really stands out in a positive way is our city's near universal recognition of the critical and truly heroic role played by our frontline grocery and drug retail workers. We have all in this city come to realize in the last year, if if we didn't understand it already, just how deeply we rely on these workers. These frontline workers can't work remotely, as Mayor Protem Gutierrez said. They have to put their own safety and through their work, the safety of their families on the line every day. They have to show up in person, day after day, and they had to do so through the absolute worst of the pandemic to keep our stores open and to keep our supply chain strong. And I I just want to point out, what is keeping our supply chain strong mean? It's it's not an academic thing. This is about making sure that we have access to food. It's about keeping us fed. It's about making sure that we have access to the critical and life-saving medications we need. It's about keeping us healthy. These workers really truly are heroes. And before I get too much further in my comments, I do want to just briefly say that I had a really informative conversation with a number of representatives from the Grocery Association. And I want to acknowledge here in my comments today, acknowledge and applaud their efforts to improve safety in their stores. And as they shared with me, they've done a lot on mask provision, on sanitation supplies, on installing Plexiglas. I appreciate that commitment and I didn't want to let my comments get too far without lifting that up. However, the fact still remains that these workplaces are premised on close and regular contact with large numbers of individuals. When every public health order we've had for over a year has admonished us to keep our distance and has admonished us to limit our contact with individuals, these frontline grocery and drug retail workers have had to do the opposite every single day to keep our stores open and to keep our community running. I know we're all feeling really hopeful about a healthier tomorrow. I know I myself am feeling a lot of hope about what a vaccinated future is going to look like, but the fact remains that these workers are still at disproportionate risk. They're still at disproportionate risk, particularly for variants. And I also think it's really important today to point out that black, Latinx, indigenous, and other people of color for whom the risks of COVID nineteen are disproportionately severe are also overrepresented in retail frontline work. So they really are shouldering significant additional burden in this COVID nineteen crisis for us and for our community. To sketch this out a little bit more, what it comes down to is this, large supermarket chains have profited during this pandemic. That is a fact. And that's a good thing. That profit is a good thing. That success is a good thing. It's to be celebrated. But I do want to sketch out for for my colleagues and for those that are are listening a little bit more about what that looks like. And the Brookings Institute came out with a report in November of two thousand twenty. I recommend everyone take a look at it if they haven't seen it yet that addresses just this issue. In that report, they looked at the big grocery chains and came to the conclusion based on the data that those chains took in billions of dollars more in profit in the first three quarters of two thousand twenty than they had in the year previous. That's billions, billions with a B. And also, in this Brookings report, it was found that that profit had not meant a commensurate increase in pay for the frontline staff. Certainly not an increase that's commensurate with the scale and scope of the profit, not one that's commensurate with the degree of risk being borne by these employees. These brave workers have shown up every day in a really challenging environment and they've earned this recognition. So I do want to highlight for my colleagues what we're voting on here today. Today, we're just voting on whether there's an interest in moving forward this conversation. So I want to be really clear about that. The specifics of of an urgency ordinance, if the will of the council is to come back for that discussion, will have to be hashed out at the appropriate time. So I think that's important to clarify. And then finally, if I may, Madam Mayor, I just want to address a couple of questions that have put been put to me, a couple of issues that folks have raised raised to me related to this item. And I I just want to address it head-on and get some information out there and then hopefully we can move to questions and comments and public comment. So the first question that I have received is why now when the pandemic is over? And I I guess, you know, I would say I've already addressed that a little bit, but I also want to point out, look, we ourselves on this council are still meeting virtually. Clearly, a pandemic is not yet over. And and that aside, that this crisis may be ending, and we hope it is, doesn't negate the value of the work done by these employees to carry us through it. That we are no longer in the worst of the pandemic doesn't erase the magnitude of the sacrifices made by these frontline workers. They have earned this recognition. The second question I get is, or have gotten rather, is is five dollars too much, one hundred and twenty days too long? Well, again, I would say that's for the council to decide when the time comes. That is where Mayor Protem Gutierrez and I wanted to begin the conversation today. But I do want to share with all of you, and I'm sure you know that many cities across California are enacting urgency ordinances in this area, and they're all doing it in slightly different ways. Generally, we see between three and five dollars for between thirty and one hundred and twenty days. So I just put that out there for some context. Finally, I've been asked, what about employers that have already paid hero pay or are currently paying hero pay to their workers? And I do want to acknowledge those employers here and and just convey my deep respect for those that have already provided meaningful compensation to their employees in recognition of the sacrifices that they've made. To the extent that there is concern on this council about a double payment type scenario, it is possible, as they did in Palm Springs, to provide for a credit. So if an employer has already provided hero pay or is currently providing hero pay, they can get a credit for that. That's what they did in Palm Springs, so I wanted to share that information. So again, all of these details are to the council if it's the council will to continue this conversation. I only highlight it to share that there really are options in creating this urgency ordinance. There are options so that we can reflect it to, we can craft it to reflect our Santa Barbara community and to create an ordinance in a way that feels appropriate to our city. So to my colleagues, thank you for hearing Mayor Protem Gutierrez and I out. And and most importantly, to our frontline workers, we thank you for your service. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Harmon, can I start with a question to you about, you were talking about Palm Springs? So if, say, we decide on five dollars an hour, but there's a store that's paying three dollars an hour. So then that means they get the credit for the three and and then they pay two dollars extra to make it up to our five?
That is how the Palm Springs ordinance works, Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay, so that would apply to stores that are paying a hazard pay currently?
Yeah, and and to the extent a store has paid hazard pay since the state of emergency has gone into effect, it was in March of two thousand twenty, I believe. Say a store has paid five dollars for one hundred and twenty days, which is the equivalent of what, let's say, the ordinance is. Under the Palm Springs framework, they would be credited for five dollars for one hundred and twenty days and not be obligated to pay a second time. It's a credit-for-credit scenario in the Palm Springs ordinance.
Okay, okay, thanks. Thanks for that. Are there any other questions from the council members? I'm positive we have people waiting for public comment. Okay, I don't see anyone popping on. Mr. Mr. Stout?
Yes, Madam Mayor, presently, there are seven members who would like to speak. Anna Marie Gott, Christian Alonso, Daniel Mora, Ian Bauch, Lee Heller, Ken Howell, Nick Borro, Rachel Torres, and Wendy Santa Maria. I have unmuted Anna Marie, and please begin your comment.
My first comment is, why don't you pass a living wage for Santa Barbara? You know, that seems that it that it would help a lot of people, not just now, but in the future without a minimum number of employees. The next one is, yeah, thirteen months into a worldwide pandemic and you're just now actually asking about hazard pay? You know, it it just, this is an election year and let's just be really blunt about it. This is probably why this is happening right now, at least at this city council. I I just have to say it's too little, it's too late. And this is just to put a checkbox next to, you know, someone's flyer that, you know, they're gonna send in the mail. Why isn't every essential worker actually covered? And why aren't the city, you know, staff covered? So let's talk about medical assistance, talk about, you know, on the front line, nurses, orderlies, EMTs, our police officers. How about anyone at a at a hardware store who they have, their business has been booming? What about Target? What about Big Five? What about any other store that was opened? Every single employee, regardless of how large or small those businesses are, should actually be paying hazard pay. Do you realize that the county health officer has stated on multiple occasions that the that the people who actually were most affected and caught COVID the most, I guess you could say, of any, you know, classification for an employee? Those would be the farm workers and guess what, restaurant workers. Okay, why aren't they, as well as your hotel staff, who greeting people from out of the area area during the pandemic, why don't they get this pay too? So instead of doing this, pass a living wage. And if you really want to, you know, pass this, make it for everyone. Not just your union members and big, big, big companies. Thank you.
Very good. Next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker will be Christian Alonso, followed by Daniel Mora. Christian, please begin.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Christian Alonso. I'm the president of the Santa Barbara Young Democrats, mouting the voice of SBID today in support of this urgency ordinance that will provide immediate hazard pay to the brave people who have been working on the front lines of COVID nineteen since day one of this global public health crisis. People around the country and other cities have been calling this type of pay hero pay, and that's apt because the folks working in our communities, grocery stores, restaurants, and retail, including your colleague, city council member Eric Friedman, are heroes. Personally, I have been fortunate enough to get to work from home since the first day of this pandemic. The folks who work in our community stores have not had that luxury and they have provided comfort and relief to me and everyone in our community throughout this ordeal and much to the sacrifice of their own health and the health of their families. It is not an exaggeration to say that these stores and the worker sacrifices have literally been a lifeline to our community. Thousands of these workers and their families have gotten COVID nineteen and some of them have made the ultimate sacrifice and some come to this terrible disease. So yes, they are heroes and they are appreciated, and we are here today to demand that this city do the bare minimum to do right by them by providing no less than five dollars an hour additional pay on top of their base salaries for every hour worked on site. It is unconscionable and quite frankly, despicable that corporate interests like the California Grocers Association have been suing cities across California to stop this temporary, temporary, and urgently needed hero pay. This is despite the fact that these corporate grocery stores in our community have made, in some cases, double their normal profits throughout the pandemic. Council member Harmon mentioned a Brookings Institution study that recently found that the top retail companies earned an extra sixteen point seven billion dollars in profit compared to the previous year. That's a forty percent increase. And yet, these same companies, on average, have only increased pay for their frontline workers by an average of one dollar and eleven cents per hour since COVID began. I want to emphasize that again. Corporate executives have walked away from all of this with billions and almost all cases getting to work safely from home on virtual meetings like the one we're having right now while their workers have been risking illness and or death. So council members, please, please do right by these heroes and adopt the urgency ordinance. Anything less than five dollars an hour additional pay to these brave people would be a shameful abdication of responsibility and an offense to the memory of folks who have paid the ultimate price to provide essential services to our community throughout this ordeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker will be Daniel Mora, followed by Ian Bauch. Daniel, you have been unmuted and please begin your comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the city council. Thank you for bringing this issue up. My name's Dan Mora from the Central Coast Labor Council, and I want to speak in favor of hero pay or hazard pay for these workers, for the farm for these workers, for the pharmacy workers, grocery workers. I want to talk from a, and it's been touched upon by Councilmember Harmon, but we are still in the middle of this pandemic. I know there might be some arguments that this is late in the game, or that there's going to be a lot of, you know, that we're going to be getting out of it soon, or this or that. There is light at the end of the tunnel, but it's still pretty dim light, you know? Just because we have vaccines doesn't mean that the threat or the danger of being in public and seeing hundreds of people goes away instantaneously. We're only 25% covered in Santa Barbara County, and so we have several months before we reach any kind of herd immunity, if in the best case scenario. So to have hazard pay, you know, as she had mentioned, for, to start with, for four months, for five dollars additional an hour, that, you know, that sunset is, you know, part of why this is important. You know, you can reevaluate in three or four months. But we are still very much in this pandemic. We will be in this pandemic at the end of the summer. It will not be going away quickly. We still have to get people shots before we can even reach this herd immunity level to where we can be unmasked and we can be safe. In addition to that, you know, it is important for grocery workers and for pharmacy workers to get this hazard pay. And yeah, five dollars is important to somebody who's working or who could only work 20 hours a week. And a lot of these workers, they might live in multifamily housing units, they might live in, they might live with other family members, elderly family members, people that haven't been able to get vaccinated, which, again, seventy-five percent of members of this county are not fully vaccinated. So there is a risk, there is a threat to going into work and seeing hundreds of people and touching items and being, you know, only a couple of feet away from folks while you're ringing them up, or you're helping them out, or you're helping them get supplies. So we're still very much in this. These workers have been doing this for the last thirteen months, and it's going to keep going. We're going to, they're still going to be going into a workplace where they can risk their health going into work. I'm speaking over Zoom. I have all my meetings over Zoom. They have to go in and physically help people and physically check them out and speak with them directly when they go into work. This is a hazardous job. And we, again, they should be able to get compensated for that risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker?
Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Ian Bauck, followed by Ken Howell and Lee Heller. Ian, you have been unmuted, and you may please begin your comments.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a seal of you. My name is Ian Doherty, Policy Director with the Young Democrats. I want to applaud Mayor Pro Tem Gutierrez and Councilmember Harmon for their work on this. I think the memorandum they produce is right on every single letter. I want to emphasize that this pandemic is by no means over. The majority of Californians don't even have a single dose of the vaccine today. And even when we reach herd immunity, you know, these essential workers are still going to be putting themselves at risk. You know, the vaccines are not 100% effective, and they're still being put at risk, even to this day. I would strongly, strongly discourage lowering this resolution by a single dime or by a single day. I don't want to say it's too little, too late. I don't think that's fair. But, you know, in honesty, I feel like we can all recognize that this really isn't enough, considering their sacrifice and what they've been through and how long they've been doing it. It could have been done earlier, and that would have been nice, but now that we're here, we all have an obligation to do what we can for the people that we applaud, the people we call essential. We really need to put our money where our mouth is, so to speak. I would, you know, maybe consider adding additional workers, other essential workers, you know, working for large businesses, and this is, to me, just a complete no-brainer. You have the shareholders of these public companies who've been lining their pockets for every single additional hour, you know, the most vulnerable people in our communities put in, just to keep our families fed and to keep their families fed. And, you know, to have them pay an extra five dollars an hour for the next four months is, I think, a no-brainer and something that we should be passing swiftly without any controversy. You know, this resolution could be the make or break difference for an essential worker and their family being able to pay their bills, to afford their rent, to stay in Santa Barbara. And to me, to not vote for this resolution, you know, as is, at least with the five dollars and a hundred and twenty days, I think it should be more, but to not vote for this resolution as is, I think it would be a political, moral, and logical failure. So please, please, pass this resolution as is, and if anything, increase it to a longer time period and more money and more workers to make up for, you know, the over a year that these people have been putting themselves at risk for all of our benefit. So thank you so much. I really appreciate the work that's been put into this and the other actions you guys are doing. So thank you so much for your time and for listening to us, and please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Bocky. Next speaker?
Madam Mayor, our next speaker will be Ken Howell, followed by Lee Heller and Nick Borro. And Ken, you have been unmuted.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Mayor Mario and Council, I'm Ken Huff, Executive Director of Santa Barbara County Action Network. We're a countywide nonprofit working to promote social and economic justice and to create sustainable communities. SB Can, thanks, Mayor Pro Tem Gutierrez and Councilmember Harmon for bringing this item before you. We strongly support hazard pay for onsite grocery and drugstore workers, and we urge your council to enact an urgency ordinance as described in the memo. Last week, SB Can submitted a letter urging approval and listing six specific reasons to approve the ordinance. I have firsthand knowledge of one of those reasons, and that is, over the last year, I've lost touch with some of my favorite restaurant owners and servers, but now appreciate so much more and know by name many of the frontline workers at the Orchid Albertsons. While I speak for our members throughout the county, including many who live in Santa Barbara, I live in Santa Maria Valley, and I'm hoping your action will motivate the county and other jurisdictions to pass similar ordinances. I hope the frontline workers I've come to know will get the hazard pay they deserve, and we hope that the workers in Santa Barbara get the hazard pay that they deserve. Please take action on this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker will be Lee Heller, followed by Nick Borro. Lee, you have been unmuted, and you may please begin.
Mayor Mario and council members, again, I want to echo much of what the prior speakers have said, and I won't repeat that because you have better things to do than listen to repetition. A couple of points. Not only is the pandemic not over, but because of the rise of these more aggressive variants, one of the things that epidemiologists are talking about is the fact that environments that were once lower risk are now higher risk, and one of the places they identify are grocery stores. So these heroes who already were exposing themselves to higher rates of infection over the past thirteen months are now at even greater risk. We do have a living wage in Santa Barbara. It would be wonderful to extend this five dollar or whatever it's going to be increase to all businesses, but the reality is so many businesses are at risk because of the economic impacts of the pandemic. So we need to focus on those businesses that can afford to pay these heroic workers. And that would be these large corporations that, as was pointed out by Councilmember Harmon, have done extremely well over the past year and are cushioned financially to be able to do this for four months. So on that basis, I would support this proposal in its current form because I think it really can make a difference at a moment when things are as likely to get worse as to get better. Also, I don't know why I got dropped out as a speaker on the previous item, but on the subject of raising revenue, try enforcing dog licensing, because nobody in town seems to be doing that, and it might not be millions, but it would be many thousands, and that would help the city from another financial perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been with us all day. Thanks so much. Next speaker?
Madam Mayor, our next speaker will be Nick Borro. And Nick, you have been unmuted, and you may please begin your comment.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Nick Bureau, and I'm here to speak on item fourteen on behalf of the California Grocers Association. CGA respectfully asks that you do not move forward with the grocery worker pay ordinance, given the negative consequences to grocery workers, neighborhoods, and the grocery industry. We agree that grocery workers serve a vital and essential role during the pandemic. They have worked tirelessly to keep stores open for consumers, allowing for our communities to have uninterrupted access to food and medications. To protect our employees, grocery stores were among the first and continue to implement numerous safety protocols, including providing PPE and masks, performing wellness checks, enhancing sanitation and cleaning, limiting store capacity, and instituting social distance requirements. Grocery employees have also received a minimum of 160 hours of additional supplemental paid leave to care for themselves and their family. This is on top of their already existing leave benefits. Grocers have also provided employees additional pay and benefits in various forms, including hourly and bonus pays averaging an extra two to three dollars, along with other significant forms of support that reduce their expenses and increase their safety. Most important, to keep grocery employees safe is the priority access to the vaccine since February that the industry fought for. Across California, all grocery workers have been able to receive the vaccine and take paid leave to do so. The state has announced a broad reopening of the economy to occur in several weeks. We believe it is inconsistent and harmful to reopening efforts for a local jurisdiction to label grocery stores as a hazard when it's not supported by evidence and while simultaneously pushing to reopen hospitality, entertainment, and other retail operations. Finally, this policy would increase employment costs to grocers by as much as 30%. The significant increase would severely impact store viability and result in increased prices for groceries, limited operating hours, reduced hours for workers, fewer workers per store, and most concerning, possible store closures. We respectfully implore the council to not move forward with the grocery worker pay ordinance at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next speaker will be Rachel Torres, followed by Ryan Allen. Rachel, you have been unmuted, and you may please begin. And Rachel, it appears you're self-muted on your end, but you may unmute yourself then, begin. Well, Madam Mayor, we could proceed with our next speaker, which will be Ryan Allen. And, oh, pardon me, Rachel, I
I'm sorry.
And please begin.
Can you hear me now? I'm so sorry about that. Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Torres. I'm the Deputy Political and Civil Rights Director with United Food and Commercial Workers Local 770. On behalf of the over 30,000 grocery and drug retail workers throughout the region, we want to express our strong support for grocery workers in the city of Santa Barbara for 120 days. As Councilmember Harmon eloquently stated, many cities have already put this policy in place with different amounts and time to varying degrees, but with each with the understanding that we are still in the hazard zone. As many have already mentioned, only 20% of our membership has actually gotten vaccinated. It's going to take times with time with access issues, getting the two shots. There's hesitancy around the Johnson &amp; Johnson shots, and so all of these things take time. So we are certainly not out of the hazard zone. If you go on our website, every day we update the count of new infections, and every single day, today, we saw new infections. Close to over 5,900 workers in the region have become infected with COVID-19, and these are just the numbers that are reported. Many stores, many companies do not do daily reports, and many of this industry is non-union. About 50 to 60% of the grocery and drug retail industry is non-union. They suffer from lower wages, from increased vulnerabilities to COVID-19, less enforcement of health and safety protocols. So this policy affects both union and non-union. And for the question around why grocery, why drug retail? We saw such a higher peak in this industry due to the closure of restaurants, which have also and we've, higher infection rates as well as much higher profit margins than other essential businesses. And to speak on the question of farm workers, the city of Coachella actually took this up as a separate policy. So they moved forward on an ordinance for grocery and drug retail as one policy and for farm workers as a separate policy. The same as Culver City. Culver City decided to do one policy for grocery and drug retail, a separate policy for healthcare workers. Because these are different industries, these are different workers, there are different profit margins. These are, these should be separate policies. But today, we have a policy that's been vetted by over 30 cities throughout California and the state of Washington. Just last week, cities like Burbank and Alhambra and Culver City and Glendale moved forward on their policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker?
Madam Mayor, our final three speakers for this item are Ryan Allen, Stanley Zankov, and Wendy Santa Maria. Ryan, you have been unmuted, and you may begin, please.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Elaine, and I'm speaking on behalf of the California Retailers Association. We also chair a statewide coalition called Californians for a Safe and Rapid Recovery, a coalition of nearly 50 national, statewide, and local organizations opposed to current mandated premium pay ordinances like the one being in Santa Barbara. We respectfully urge your no vote on a premium pay ordinance. First and foremost, this ordinance does not take into consideration the fact that California's COVID-19 daily case rate is rapidly declining and vaccinations are available to every Californian over the age of 13. Additionally, food retailers voluntarily increased pay and benefits by $17 billion nationwide in 2020. To say that we have not done our part is ignoring reality. Let me be clear, the grocery business operates on razor-thin margins, and premium pay ordinances will have dire impacts. Last year, despite an increase in sales, Food Industry Association reported that in 2020, profit margins were an average of only 2.5% because of an added PPE costs and higher pay and benefits for employees. In fact, the city of LA's Economic Impact Report found government-mandated premium pay would eliminate all current profit margin for retailers, forcing them to raise prices or close stores. The consequences of premium pay should not be a surprise to any of you. After the cities of LA and Long Beach passed their ordinances, five grocery stores announced their closures, leading to hundreds of lost jobs and avoiding the communities that depend on them. And the study by the California Grocers Association estimates that premium pay mandates will add about $400 to the annual cost of food and household supplies for the typical family of four in California. Premium pay mandates, such as the one being discussed today, put local governments in the middle of employer and labor bargaining processes. Decisions to legislate pay should not be made at the local level, but decided in Sacramento or Washington, DC. Instead, local governments should be focused on quickly administering vaccinations to keep everyone safe while ensuring a rapid economic recovery. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Speaker?
Yes, Madam Mayor, our next speaker is Stanley Zankov. And Stanley, you have been unmuted, and you may please begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I am a 12-year-long resident of the area, a former grocer myself, a nonprofit worker with the privilege of working from home, and a community member sharing my strong support of this proposed ordinance. As other speakers have noted, this is, standing with these workers is the right thing to do in this time. And we've seen that despite the record-making profits, large chain grocery and drug corporations have ultimately chosen profit over people and deserted these essential frontline workers, leaving them with scarce protections and inadequate compensation to navigate these dangerous conditions. Implementing this temporary increase pay is the important role you can play today to help our neighbors navigate this tough situation. Unfortunately, despite the encouraging increases in vaccination rates and decreasing infection and death rates locally, this pandemic is far from over, as you all well know. And as we've witnessed throughout this pandemic, low-wage and underemployed workers, especially in these high-risk professions, find themselves in a bind. More often than not, unable to afford missing shifts when concerned about their health because of their economic precarity, especially in a place with such outrageous housing costs. And for all the reasons that Rachel with UFPW and others have elevated, we know that this group of workers face higher infection rates and should be an area of serious focus in your policymaking. Thank you in particular to council members Harmon and Gutierrez for bringing this important item up, and for all of you for your serious consideration into this, and thank you for considering supporting this ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Mayor, our final speaker on this item is Wendy Santa Maria. Wendy Santa Maria, I have unmuted you, and Wendy Santa Maria, I have unmuted you and you may begin, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Wendy Santa Maria. I'm speaking on behalf of cause in full support of the urgency ordinance for hazard pay for grocery and drug retail workers. And as essential workers, grocery and drug retail workers are still enduring some of the highest rates of infection, even with vaccines that have just recently became available due to some logistics that were mentioned earlier. And a five-dollar wage increase is crucial because most grocery and drug retail workers make close to minimum wage and actually work part-time. For workers who, for example, only work twenty-five hours a week, a five-dollar an hour increase would only amount to about a hundred and fifty dollars more per week, which to an essential worker makes all the difference. Five dollars is a minimum amount of money to validate and incentivize coming to work in these hazardous working conditions. And in addition, this policy only affects the larger chains who have seen record profits due to the pandemic and would not affect mom-and-pop stores who are struggling to stay open. Rather, this policy is only for those large grocery chains who have seen record profits and who can afford to give their workers that hazard pay they deserve. I think it's time we go past calling our essential workers heroes and start treating them as such. And so we urge you to please vote in favor of this emergency ordinance before our essential workers and our community reach a breaking point. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Santa Maria. We'll close public comment and keep in mind that we're talking about moving it forward. Maybe I'll start with a question to our city attorney. I'm assuming that Mr. Kulan, that if we decided today to go forward, we would ask you to write up the ordinance? Is that how it would work, sir?
Yes, Mayor, and the council would need to decide the path the ordinance would follow. I know that there's been some discussion about various criteria that might be in the ordinance. So normally, that's hashed out at the ordinance committee.
Okay, okay. So that should be part of our discussion today, my colleagues. Send it to ordinance first and then to us. And Ms. Gutierrez, what are your thoughts on the subject?
I'm a little confused. May I ask Ms. Harmon? So this resolution, it also will favor those grocery workers that work in small grocery stores?
Go ahead, Ms.
So is this, so my understanding, and excuse my ignorance, for a resolution, normally it just states like, we support this effort. But for this resolution, what are the actions that are going to be taking place? If you can explain it to me like you're explaining it to a high school student, please.
So, sure, and Madam Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong. So what we're talking about today is whether, it's not actually a resolution, it's whether we want to move forward to create an urgency ordinance. Mayor Protem Gutierrez and I brought this forward, and the reason we did a two-person memo was obviously because we wanted to see if there was majority interest from the council to pursue an urgency ordinance of this type. And if there is, it can move forward. If there's not, then that's that. And in terms of the question, the way that we have sketched this out, Mayor Protem Gutierrez and I is in, I think, and I'd have to open the agenda report, but it's for grocery and drug retail employers that have more than three hundred workers nationwide and more than fifty employed in the city. So it's not intended to impact our small businesses.
And this ordinance will, how long will this take place if we end up saying, yes, we want to support it?
The suggestion was a hundred and twenty days, so four months. But that, that could be reduced or extended. And it's five dollars an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so. So the question is, you know, do we all support it enough to move it on to the city attorney to draft an ordinance? Ms. Nedden, questions if you have any at this point, maybe, or opinion?
Questions or maybe just some discussion points? I'm not, I'm not sure. And these are just really genuine questions I have. There's the sort of calling it hazard pay or hero pay. And it's bringing to mind also for me, you know, nurses, orderlies, EMTs, all the workers who clean hospital rooms and how at risk they have been, hospice care, farmworkers, restaurant workers. I mean, there are our own staff, actually, in the city. And we've had so many workers going above and beyond in this time. And I'm, I guess it's a question, I'm not, I'm genuinely, I don't understand the delineation of grocery workers who absolutely are heroes and are facing hazards compared to, you know, a childcare worker or a nursery school provider or a healthcare worker. I'm not sure I understand the delineation there and if somebody could help me with that. And then also in the conversation, I'm completely in support of a living wage and if this could be directed towards that or when we do get funds, if there are ways that we could use those emergency funds that come to us to distribute bonuses in some way to those who in our community have really been on that front line. I'm, I guess, so I have a question about the delineation. I guess I absolutely grocery store workers, and I get it, that that can't be done, not in person. But, you know, you know, we have, we have workers in our, in our Creek's Division who clean out encampments and who are exposed to a lot every day as well. So I'm not, I'm just not, I'm just not clear on that. I want to not choose some heroes over other heroes. And I guess the other question I have, I have a couple of questions, I guess for discussion. So it's my understanding, and I don't, I don't know, but it's my understanding that our local grocery stores are, that all of them, the larger ones that would be impacted by this, have union representation for their workers. So I am, I am a little bit interested in that and the negotiation process is there. So this is a question about that, like I believe in the power of the union negotiation. And if we're then kind of stepping into that process, I'm not sure if that's the role of the city, that's something to talk about. And I'm, I just, these are genuine, genuine questions. I guess I'll, I guess I'll start, start there. But I would be supportive of actually looking at hero pay for our own city staff. We have many who have been very much on the front lines. And I am a little bit concerned from a city council perspective of mandating this for workers and not our own. So I would, I would put that out there too. And maybe we could have a further study of, you know, in some areas, these numbers that have been used for health, grocery workers have been sort of large cities. And I think locally, if I'm understanding, that we haven't had that high of rates of incidence for our local grocery stores. And I'm not sure, and I'm not saying that they don't absolutely deserve it. It's not, it's not a question of that. These are sort of genuine questions I have about the delineations and how that works.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, thanks, Councilmember Sin. I could just, to your question specifically, a couple of them that I can answer, at least for myself. As to the delineation, I completely agree with you. All of our frontline workers deserve recognition of their good work. As I think one or two of the public commentators said, though, these industries are very different and should be taken up differently in sort of respect of that. A number of cities actually have taken up hero pay, appreciation pay ordinances for different industries, as you described. So I think that's something you, we could certainly pursue. I also really appreciate your idea of using some of our COVID-19 relief money to provide a fund. You know, one of the issues is administration of this. And if we, as a city, put forth a fund, I know a couple of other cities are doing that. That could be an interesting idea. I also just briefly wanted to say, no, not all of our grocery stores are unionized. The one that comes to mind right off the bat is Trader Joe's. It's a non-union shop, as well, I believe, as Bristol Farms, which is in the city. And then I assume Whole Foods as well. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on those last two, but I know, I know Trader Joe's certainly. So just to answer your questions on that, thanks.
A question, if you wanted to propose a living wage, that would be, I guess, a different question. We do have a living wage ordinance for vendors and contractors who do business with the city. And I remember when that was proposed back in two thousand and three, maybe two thousand and five, there was a question about why isn't it for the whole community? And it seemed like a starting place, is to have it for city contractors. I hear you, Ms. Nedden, if you're, you know, if you're not comfortable. I feel like healthcare workers, I think maybe they're paid on a little bit of a higher scale. And my thoughts are, I just remember how stressful it was shopping a year ago. And I was just there to pick up some groceries and those workers were there for an eight-hour shift in a stressful time. No one was vaccinated. And I'm remembering the day that we had a discussion in our meeting about whether to ask if senior citizens could have their own time period to shop because there was so much congestion and worry about their age. And eventually, most of the markets did pick a time when older people could go to go shopping. So I think this is a class of workers that really did, they had a really hard time when a lot of people were at, stay at home. But I guess that's what I would say about that. I wasn't quite ready to deliberate, but I was trying to respond to your question about why these heroes and not others. I'll let Mr. Jordan go, and I do have some other things to say when it's my turn. So, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Probably the biggest concern I have with this is just timeliness and being on the tail end, even compared to other cities that are doing this. And I am trying hard to read the tea leaves and decide where we're going, but I'm having trouble reading the tea leaves. But some of the questions that have been raised about other segments of the, of other industries, I agree with some of your answers right there. But, but really, the only tangible difference I see in the discussion is hazard pay being linked to unusual profits during the same period of time that the hazard was there. Certainly, many of the other industries I heard talked about, whether it's healthcare, agricultural workers, restaurants, I mean, any of the forward-facing industries. To my knowledge, I don't think they exhibit the same level of profits of some of the data that I've seen, in particular for the grocery business. But the only other one I would say would be home improvement business. Because I just know those are off the walls too, is the, everybody's buying supplies to do stuff for their home improvements. In particular, where this goes, if, I don't know that I'm supportive or not supportive at this point in time because the devil's in the details, but I'd be interested in the details eventually offering some type of exemption or credit for those entities that have increased their pay to their employees during a, whatever you're calling a hazard pay period, so that whatever the number is, three, five, ten dollars, is offset by the increased pay that those groups have given. And I really just have no finger on the pulse of the timeline. One hundred and twenty days seems to me will be certainly not in the end of the pandemic, but on the tail end of the pandemic. I know many of the others are expiring roughly sixty, seventy days from now at the end of June. So maybe you tie it in with that. Then, just kind of a couple of inside-my-head issues with this. I'd love if somebody was conversant enough to tell me why this is not similar to arguments whenever they come up about a sales tax increase for good purposes too, and why the consequences of this won't also disproportionately potentially affect those in lower income levels. Either people will lose jobs, either prices will go up across the whole gamut of the industry and just negatively affect something everybody needs, which is food. So I, I don't, I don't really know how I, how I get away from that argument that I hear anytime we should use a sales tax revenue to, or sales tax process to increase revenue. And then, you know, some arguments were made on both sides that I just, just, I hope, are not being used. And that was one that the industry has made billions while only giving a dollar in raises. They're mixing apples and oranges there because they're not telling me what the dollars in wages, the one dollar in wages led to, or more importantly, what the five-dollar in potential wages leads to in relationship to that billions. And then the other side that, that, you know, a vaccination is available to every Californian sixteen years or older, that obviously is totally false. Sixteen-year-olds are eligible for vaccination, but I can show you some very close to sixteen-year-olds that are close to me that can't get theirs yet because they're not available. So I'd hate to see those arguments. And if this grows into a larger conversation on living wage, I would certainly want to see a discussion point in there on how to ensure a living profit for those who do take up the burden of business ownership and paying employees and contributing to that community well-being and paying taxes also. So those are kind of my thoughts. You know, kind of at the basis of this, being an emergency ordinance, it needs to happen quick. I agree, if we do it, it needs to happen quick and not be slogging through two more weeks of ordinance and then get back to council in another week. But there are so many details here that matter that I'm not really sure how you accomplish it quickly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Gutierrez, did you want to come back? Any other commentary at this time? Go ahead.
My only concern with this, and I, I see the intent, and it's great. My only concern is the smaller grocery stores in town that really have employees that are living under the poverty level. These bigger, large corporations of grocery stores have union representation. And these small grocery stores in town, their workers were working, you know, around the clock. And like Ms. Nedden said, I just, I feel a little bit uncomfortable. And maybe this is more discussion in prioritizing frontline workers. Yeah, that's where it stands.
Ms. Gutierrez, are you saying that you, you want the employees at the smaller stores to get the hero pay too? Or you're concerned?
Yeah, I'm concerned about if we pass this, the ones that really kind of need that boost of income are the ones that are working at the smaller grocery. And that sounds a little bit wrong too, because then people can interpret it as the ones that are working at the larger grocery stores don't need it. But that's not what I'm trying to say. I, and Mr. Jordan said, you know, the ones that are really living under the poverty level and has been really affected by this COVID pandemic financially, most of them are not working in these big groceries, you know, large corporation grocery stores. They're either working in construction in these small grocery stores or in agricultural They're either working in construction in these small grocery stores or in agriculture. So those are my concerns. If we can have further discussion or have my colleagues look into these concerns and come back, I think that would be an idea.
I know that Mr. Harris, Jason Harris, has been helping small businesses apply for loans, low-interest loans, and apply for grants, so money that doesn't have to be paid back. I'm not sure if he was trying to help the stores that you're thinking of in particular, Ms. Gutierrez, but the city has been there, trying to be of service to all businesses in this time period of pandemic. So, Ms. Nedden, more thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So that's helpful. And as I'm looking through, it looks to me like it's mostly really large cities, and that makes sense. And I think I'm interested in more information, I guess. I think it's not clear to me which ones of our stores have union representation or not, which stores this would actually apply to or not. And actually, like, as Councilmember Jordan mentioned, you know, it seems to be applying to try and even out if somebody made gross profit as a result of the pandemic and then are not sharing that with their employees. So I guess I'm really interested in, is that the case? I mean, I can guess it's probably the case of one of our larger ones is part of a chain, but I don't know. So I'm a little bit, I mean, I'm willing to move forward with more information, I guess, and not wanting to slow it all the way down so that it's not even useful anymore. But, and then really, I would want it to come back with a full consideration of all of our heroes. I'm very, of course, want this to be sort of evenly, I don't know. I'm very concerned about that, the messaging that there are some heroes and not others. And I'm not comfortable with that. But if we could have more information on that moving forward. Honestly, this is, it still doesn't all make sense to me. Honestly, I can see if there's gross profits and then not sharing, but then I would think that the unions would negotiate that. And then if there's not, I don't know. It seems out of my depth, frankly.
Well, you know, how I'm looking at it is that it, reports have shown that these large grocers made a lot of profit during the pandemic, and it didn't trickle down to the employees. And so some of the unions have taken it up. If they had been, if the workers had been taken care of, then they wouldn't have brought it up. So I'm looking at it like that. The stores that have 300 employees nationwide, really, it makes it clear. It's the much bigger chains. It's also in the memo, retail drug. So those are all larger firms with lots of employees and like, has been proven more profits. And so that's why there's this effort to make sure that these workers are also benefiting from the profits. So it made, it makes sense to me, and I am willing to vote for it to go forward. But what I'm hearing is that there's a split of three and three at this point. We could try a motion to see if someone is supportive enough to ask our city attorney to draft an ordinance. We could bring it back for more discussion. Mr. Gutierrez, what are your thoughts?
I just want to add a little bit more that, you know, the intent of this isn't to, you know, devalue any other efforts, you know. Just because we're focusing on this group doesn't mean that we don't find the value of all the other groups. So we just want to take small bites of a bigger apple, and this is what we're focusing on. So everyone matters, right? Every effort that was done by all these different groups matters. But we're just focusing on this one, that again, it's just the smaller bites of a bigger apple. So just keep that in mind when it comes to, you know, moving this forward, if you feel inclined to.
Well, Mr. Gutierrez, would you, or Ms. Harmon, would you like to make a motion? Or do you have a thought about how we can move the discussion forward?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, I just want to also lift up what Mayor Protem Gutierrez just said. I really appreciated his framing and exactly what I was thinking. So thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, I think in hearing some of my colleagues, I'm going to try to craft something that may speak to some of the concerns identified by some of them. And hopefully, I believe, we'll need four votes, so we'll just go for it. So, Madam Mayor, I would like to move that we direct the city attorney to bring back an urgency ordinance related to hero pay. And I think, from what I heard from Councilmember Jordan, he would like to see this ordinance align with the other Southern California region. So maybe we say 60 days and include the provision that allows for a credit, a credit for those employers that have already paid hero or appreciation pay. So if that's a sufficient motion, that's what I'll make for now.
I'll second that. So to move it forward with the provision of 60 days, and it would include a credit that would be factored in if a store has already paid hazard or appreciation pay, I think was the expressions that I've been hearing. Mr. Jordan, to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to look at that, and I'd also like to hear back from the city attorney as part of that presentation on options for that dollar amount compared to what's happening in other places. Is it five generally? Is it three generally? Is it just scattershot, whatever it is? So I'll support that motion, just to get to look, I share a little bit, probably not as, well, I don't want to speak for her, but maybe not as broad of concerns on data and knowledge, as maybe Councilmember Snedden said too. But to me, the biggest hurdle here for me is the tardiness of this in relationship to where we are and how long it's been going on, and the need for having information in front of us to direct the city attorney to come back with data, rather than just throwing a number out the wall and say, hey, any number's good. So I'm willing to support this, but that would be part of my hope, is that we would see a little more data back quickly as to how this is working in other places, what the dollar amounts are, how the credit would work for pay increases paid before. So that's what I would hope to see.
And we did hear from the public comment, out of public comment, that there's many cities that have done this, and no stores closed, and nobody lost their jobs. And so that would definitely help us get over the hump. And then, you know, I had a note, Mr. Jordan, speaking to the timing of it. My information is that roughly 50% of the people in Sound of Arbor County have received their first shot. And between 20, 25% are actually fully vaccinated right now. So...
So you're actually, Madam Mayor, you're actually low on the second one. It's a little higher. It's a little, I think it's a little more than 25. And you're a little high on the first one. It's about 43% overall are fully vaccinated, which are just hair-splitting numbers. But they are much higher than what we heard in public, much better, I think, than what we heard in public comment. So, yes.
So then you're agreeing that we're not out of the pandemic, right?
Oh, definitely, definitely not. But I agree too that there's an exponential benefit to every person who becomes vaccinated. Isn't just the number in that percentage, they're not a carrier anymore too. They move you closer to that herd thing. So anyhow, I totally support it. I don't need more stats. Really, what I need is the package that's going to come back. So I'm happy also to lend my support to the process going forward.
Good. Then I won't address you anymore, since you're going to vote for the motion. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do you have the motion? And unless anyone else has more commentary, we can take a vote.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is a motion by Councilmember Harmon and seconded by Mayor Mario to direct the city attorney to bring back an urgency ordinance related to hero pay for 60 days with a provision allowing for credit for employers who have paid hero pay or appreciation pay.
That sounds right to me. Ms., okay. Ms. Harmon, did that sound right? And if it did, then I'll go to Mr. Cologne.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, good. So Mr. Cologne and then Ms. Nedden? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, two things that kind of work together here. First, the motion, if you're intent on doing this as an emergency process, the motion should include a time for us to return. I do want to caution you that the charter will require you to determine that the measures needed for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, or safety, and the ordinance will need to include a statement of reasons. A lot of that work has been done today. And, but I do want to caution you that that's not a trivial hurdle here for some of the reasons you've heard. So I'm happy to do it, but please give me a timeframe so that I can meet your direction.
So you're saying that the urgency aspect requires the two provisions that you just mentioned? Peace, health, and what was the second one?
Immediate preservation of public peace, health, or safety, and the statement of the reasons. As I said, the work the council's done between the memo and your discussion answers some of that. I'd prefer not to get into any concerns I have off the cuff. I'd prefer to communicate with you confidentially and after having a chance to reason through it. And let me say why. Your process, having a council memorandum come for discussion, is really meant to allow you the creativity, you, the council, the creativity to lead the community how you will. I don't want to be a barrier to that. Having said that, when these memoranda come to the city council, it's without benefit of any staff review. So I am hearing it today for the first time, the same as anyone else. Having said that, I will do anything to accommodate your direction.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jordan? Or Ms. Nedden, I'm sorry. Ms. Nedden was ahead of you. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm inclined to not be the one that stands in the way of this moving forward, just because I don't understand it. I'm willing to take more time for me to look at that more, and I'm actually feeling a lot better knowing that our city attorney is going to be looking at it also. So I just am coming into this, and it is without the benefit of a staff analysis. It is hard to make a decision, but if what we're deciding today is whether to continue considering this, I'm willing to continue considering it and admit that I don't have enough information. But I would like in that analysis, a listing of which stores this actually would be applying to. I think we're sort of confident it's not mom-and-pop, and it's only ones who've had gross profit. But I think until I actually see that list, for the future vote on that. And then also, you know, for those urgency ordinance measures, meeting those qualifications, I'm thinking that there's probably other categories of workers that would fit in that designation also. And so if that could maybe be part of the analysis as well, and then maybe when we get all that information, then deciding what to do with it from there. But I'll vote for it to move forward, to continue to consider it and get a full staff analysis.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
All right, I just had a question for Mr. Cologne on what sounded like the health benefit and welfare or safety kind of finding thing. And I'm sorry if this is just the off-the-cuff part of thing, but when this has happened in whatever, the 30 other cities in California, do they generally have that same kind of finding to make, and they have made it successfully?
Actually, I'm not sure. I do believe there's been some litigation around the emergency findings. If the council wishes to go forward on the basis of an emergency ordinance, that's within your prerogative under the charter. We need the facts to fit. I'll volunteer that the fact that doesn't fit is the profitability of the grocery business during the pandemic. So at some point, I may ask the council to steer away from that conclusion as a legislative basis for what is a lawful hourly wage measure by the city.
Got it. And then, on an emergency ordinance, does that have to slog back through the ordinance committee? Or that, can that, all that discussion and potential adoption come right back to council?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, the latter. It would come directly back to council when you tell us to bring it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Mr. Cologne, at the risk of just upsetting the apple cart here, so what if we took out the urgency part of it and said, let's take a little more time with it? So then it would go to the ordinance committee. It could go to the ordinance committee and the city council on the same day, right? What would happen if we took out the word urgency?
The issue would be when the ordinance became effective. And where I would want to be creative is in whether we can have some kind of look-back provision, particularly given that the council motion so far is talking about a credit for employers who paid some form of additional pay during the pandemic. So I do think we'd want to move quickly. If, what could we live with? We could come to ordinance committee, May 18th. Recognize that we're spending people, we're spending nights and weekends, and we're willing to do it, but recognize that that is the cost.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Gutierrez, did you have something? You came on briefly and then left. Okay. If we're ready to vote, then, Mr. Clerk, if you would repeat the motion, and we'll take a run at it.
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor. If I could ask you to restate the motion, would it only include the removal of the word urgency?
No, we're keeping urgency in there. Yeah.
Okay. The motion remains, this is a motion by Councilmember Harmon and seconded by Mayor Mario to direct the city attorney to bring back an urgency ordinance related to hero pay for 60 days with a provision allowing for a credit for employers who have paid hero or appreciation pay.
I think that's accurate.
And Councilmember Friedman is recused. Councilmember Jordan?
Mr. Cologne, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt again. It would, we are all inferring that the rest of the motion is, remain consistent with the memorandum from councilmembers Harmon and Gutierrez. If so, I'd like that added, meaning the $5, the other terms that are in that memo. They're not stated in the motion.
Ms. Harmon, will you incorporate the rest of your memo into the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will do so, though I also just want to reflect back again. I don't know if this needs to go in the motion, the request from some of our colleagues, that at the time that this comes back to us, we have a discussion or at least a representation of what some of the other cities have done on the dollar amount. I think that was a request that was made by one of our colleagues. So I don't know if that needs to go in the motion, or if that can just be heard and understood, but...
I'm glad you stated it. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Cologne.
No, no, no apology. No, no, no apology. It, it's work that I can't execute on between now and May eighteenth. So your motion should include the city administrator in that direction or further research on what other cities have done.
Okay. If it's incorporated, Ms. Harmon, I'll second it.
Yes, Madam.
Okay. Then I think we're ready to take a vote.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Friedman is recused. Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Oscar Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Snedden?
Yeah.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye. Okay, so that passed with six aye votes. And. Thank you. Mr. Clerk for helping us with that. Mr. Cologne, Mr. Casey, for the work you're going to do in the future on it. We'll close that item and I believe we are rescheduling our closed session, which is item number fifteen. Mr. Cologne, is that right? You, you will do it, we'll do it next. Next week.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have an opportunity to combine a couple of closed sessions next week.
Okay, to be time efficient. Thank you. We didn't ask for city council committee assignment reports. Does anyone have anything to report? I do real quick. Oh, there, go ahead, Ms. Gutierrez.
I've attended the Ortega Park Murals Outreach meetings throughout the week and just want to remind folks that this Saturday from one to three. There is going to be community outreach at Ortega Park. There's going to be information about. Details about the remodel of a park and how to, how the city and the community are working together to preserve the murals. And this is why I'm sporting my cool t-shirt today in support of that. So if my colleagues want to. Learn a little bit about the murals and get to know the Eastside community, you guys are welcome.
Right, and I saw that it's, will be COVID safe, so wear your mask and, and it's in person at Ortega Park and keep your distance. Okay. Ms. Nedden, your report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've also been attending the Ortega Park meetings and I'm looking forward to this event and just a reminder that it's also Earth Day festivities this weekend and. That's a good time to, to celebrate those values as well.
Thanks. I attended the youth council meeting last night. It was sure good to be back with our young people. There was a healthcare for all event over the weekend. There's a Planned Parenthood support event last week. Then I attended SB CAG meeting. On last Thursday and I was looking at all of our transportation projects. And I, oh, the South Coast, the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership meeting was last week and. Had a great report about. Work to prevent. Street violence among our youth. So, okay, that's it. Thank you so much, everyone, for participating in this meeting. And we'll see you next Tuesday. Meeting adjourned.